The Huntsville City Council Meeting is now in session. If you were to have an electronic device that could disrupt this proceeding, please turn it off or put it in a silent mode. As always, thank you so kindly for your help. Also, will you stand if you will please for the invocation led by the amen Rajab Hamas? And remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Dr. Richard Showers.
In the name of the Almighty God, the Creator of the heavens and the earth and all whatever exists, he is the loving and the kind. We love him and we are very confident that he loves us. Our Lord, bless our time and bless our life and bless our brothers and sisters and bless our leaders in Huntsville City to the best leadership, to serve our community, to serve the homeless and the poor and the needy and the helpless. Our Lord, we ask you and we seek your help, your guidance, your mercy and your forgiveness. Help us to be united, to be brothers and sisters, to love one another and to work together to serve our community. Amen.
Council members, you have before you an electronic copy of the minutes from our regular council meeting held January the 28th, 2016. Are there any corrections or additions?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there should be a correction on Resolution Number 16-062. If you remember right, it was the Councilman Kling's request for travel. It was very complicated. I think that it should show Kling and Robinson made the motion in the second for the amendment, not Showers and Robinson.
Let the minutes reflect the changes that Dr. Robinson and Councilman Kling made the motion for travel.
It was moved to amend.
Moved to amend the motion for travel. Seconded by Councilman Kling. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. The minutes are amended. Thank you, Mr. Russell. We're now at Agenda Item Number Four, Resolutions and Special Recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I ask Kenny Anderson to come forward? It's time for our Youth of the Month this month. This young man I've been watching grow up for a long time. He started off down here and now he's gotten up to here. And we'd like to ask Bobby Pastorelli to come up, please.
Steve, come on up and join us. Let's have Bobby's parents come up as well, please. They wanted to take pictures. We'll get some pictures afterwards.
The parents are Bob and Anna Pastorelli, and Bob was our Garrison Commander at one time.
Every month, we have the opportunity to celebrate a young person in the community who's doing something wonderful. We know that our community is full of young people who are doing that, so it is especially honorable that we can speak to and recognize Bobby Pastorelli this evening. Let me just share a little something about Bobby. He's a 12th grade student at St. John Paul II Catholic High School. Some of his community service includes Huntsville Madison County Veterans Memorial Foundation, the American Red Cross, the Downtown Rescue Mission, Habitat for Humanity, and lots and lots of other things. He has received the National Student Leadership Conference Program certification on engineering, and he's dedicated with a true servant heart and displays an extraordinary commitment to serving others. He wants to attend college and major in computer sciences and hopes to obtain a rewarding position that utilizes his experiences, his leadership, education, and skills. Bobby, you are the February Star 99.1 Caffey Young Citizen of the Month. Congratulations. And we're going to share some more love with you at this time, starting with Captain Rice.
Mr. Pastorelli, on behalf of Chief Mark McMurray and the entire Huntsville Police Department, we want to commend you for a job well done. We encourage you to continue in the future to be a leader in our community and continue to be a part of the shining star of the city of Huntsville, Alabama.
Bobby, on behalf of Huntsville Utilities and our CEO, Mr. Jay Stowe, we have a couple of items in the bag. Something for your mind, something for your body, and something for your spirit, and there may be a little card in here. Don't spend it all in the same place. Continue to do great things, young man.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Bobby, I represent the Optimist Club of Huntsville. The Optimist Club's motto is bringing out the best in young people. We've been doing that since 1947 in this community. So we thought there was no better way to participate in this community than to be a part of this STAR program. So we would like to offer you a gift certificate for your achievement. Continue to do well. Thank you.
Bobby, well-deserved honor for you. Parents here, on behalf of the Human Relation Commission, which our chair is sitting there, Aladdin Beshir, we'd like to congratulate you on this prestigious honor. It's a great honor for this community to have a young person like you who brings value to this community, and we're thankful for that. We're proud to be part of this team today that's recognizing you, and good luck in your future endeavors. So here you go. Thank you.
Bobby, you're the man. Got a swag bag from Star 99. Congratulations from the Stephen Diddy Morning Show, everybody at the radio station. And who knows, maybe one day we'll be here standing before Mayor Pastorelli. You know, Governor Pastorelli, President Pastorelli. You never know. Good luck to you, man. Absolutely.
And Bobby, on behalf of the city of Huntsville, I want to say congratulations to Anna and Bob. You've done a great job in raising a young man, making sure that he lives up to the ideals that y'all have lived up to on a day-to-day basis. And Bobby, if you ever want to say thank you, turn around and say thank you to those two people because they're the ones who made this happen. But here's a coin from the city to say thank you. It's given an honor of people who do great things for this city, and we expect more greater things to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Council members, we're now at Agenda Item Number Four, Adoption and Presentations. 4B2A is a resolution recognizing Judge Joyce London Alexander Ford as the guest speaker at Alabama Democratic Conference 2016 Annual Membership Breakfast to be held February the 20th, 2016.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. Dr. Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution will be presented on behalf of the mayor and Lex Huntsville at the ADC Annual Breakfast, and at that time, I will be there to present on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. 42B is a resolution congratulating Epsilon Gamma Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on its 58th Annual Deputent Presentation and Ball to be held February the 19th, 2016. The Chair moves for approval. Seconded by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. Dr. Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we will be presenting this resolution the night of the Ball on behalf of the mayor and the city council.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. 42C is a resolution authoring honoring the life and achievements of Charles Cox Senior, brought by Councilman Kling. Motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, seconded by Mr. Russell. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. Councilman Kling.
Mr. President, this will be presented to the family next week, but it is a chance for us to recognize Mr. Cox, who'd been involved in many numerous civic, sports, and professional associations here in the Huntsville Madison County area.
Thank you, Councilman Kling. We're now at announcements. Council members, the administration has requested that council consider tonight by unanimous consent Items 14A and 14B. Both of these items are on tonight's agenda for introduction, and the administration advises us that immediate consideration of these items is necessary. We'll consider these items later when we arrive at that point in the agenda. Also, additionally, Councilman Kling has requested unanimous consent to have an item added to tonight's agenda. The item to be added is a resolution authorizing the city council of the city of Huntsville to pledge the amount of $4,600 towards the minimum local match requirement of a potential grant for the Alabama Historical Commission to the Huntsville Historic Preservation Commission for the professional survey of the historic McThormore Acres neighborhood to determine its eligibility for the National Registry of Historic Places. The Chair moves for unanimous consent to add this item to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, interrupt with a point of order. To add some of the agenda, all you need is two-thirds vote. You do not need unanimous consent?
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Further discussion?
Mr. President, I'll second your motion to place it on the agenda.
Motion is made by the Chair, seconded by Mr. Kling. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. We'll address this at 15C double C. Also, council members, we will have a work session on March the 3rd at 2016 at 5:00. We have a couple of items on the agenda, discussion of the minimum wage, and we also have a work session for the traffic flow. If you'd like to add any items, please contact Tamika McWilliams, our assistant. Any other special recognitions? We're now at Agenda Item Six, Public Hearings. 6A is a public hearing to be held. 6A1 is a public hearing on resolution authorizing the approval of an urban renewal redevelopment plan for Research Park East. This was set January the 28th, 2016 at our regular council meeting. Mr. Davis.
Council members and general public, as we start this public hearing, I'd like to take the opportunity to give a short presentation before we invite public comment. So, you know, the proposed public hearing, or the public hearing that you just began is the Research Park East Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan. So the first question most public of the audience would have is, what is the Urban Renewal Redevelopment Plan? An urban renewal redevelopment plan defines a specific area within a community that has been determined to be in need of redevelopment, rehabilitation, or conservation in order to reverse and prevent blighted conditions such that the health, safety, morals, and economic welfare are preserved within that community. We're speaking about Cummings Research Park and, more specifically, Cummings Research Park East. Some background that you're much well aware of. Cummings Research Park is the second-largest research and development park in the United States and the fourth-largest in the world. Cummings Research Park covers just under 4,000 acres, has nearly 300 corporate offices, and employs roughly 35,000 people. CRP, along with Redstone Arsenal, has a $12.9 billion economic impact to the Tennessee Valley region. Major industries include aerospace, defense, engineering, biotechnology, advanced manufacturing, software development, and ITS services. So that in a nutshell is a very important component of this community, has been for over 50 years. So Cummings Research Park is divided into two primary sections, which are separated by Research Park Boulevard, Research Park West, and Research Park East. This urban renewal redevelopment plan focuses on the Research Park East area and its surrounding properties. Cummings Research Park East is the original and oldest section of our park. Some properties within CRP East date back to the 1960s. Over the past decade, Research Park East and portions of its surrounding area has experienced an increase in vacancies and relocations due to deteriorated and aging structures, which are causing blighted conditions or will extend into more blighted conditions. Without a focus and a plan to reverse and prevent further decline, these conditions will continue and contribute to the spread of blight in adjacent areas. It's the reason we're bringing this plan for you tonight for consideration. Support data for the urban renewal redevelopment plan. So the city's been working mainly with our planning department, HPD, a lot of resources, our chamber, to compile data to justify this plan and the need for the plan. And I'd like to present some of those findings. The first map shows property structure and age. Everything you see highlighted in blue is at least 25 years or older in age of structure. Again, it's the oldest portion of Research Park dating back to the 1960s, and its surrounding area, the commercial corridor, has grown up around University Drive at the same point in period. Property utilization. This is a color-coded map to where we went and identified and surveyed and evaluated properties within the boundary of this proposed plan. The areas that you see in red are deteriorated and 100% vacant. The ones that you see in blue are deteriorated and have some percentage of vacancies ranging from 10% to about 50% vacant. The ones that are in kind of the grayish-brown is deteriorated and occupied, and then the ones that are in the bright blue are 25-plus in age with some vacancy. And typically, those have less than 25% vacancy. So they're sound but have some vacancy or some deterioration that's starting to occur. And the green shaded areas are vacant lots that we've identified that, you know, with a plan, that those lots could become a part of the community in a development and contribute to the overall economy. Huntsville Police Department, 2015 Calls for Service. This period started January 1st and ended December 31st of 2015. The points that you see in red had an occurrence somewhere between 151 calls to 462. I can tell you the part up near Madison Square Mall was on the high end of, actually had 1,475 calls for service in 2015, just under 1,500 calls for service in that general location. So you can kind of see that it varies in the northwest quadrant and then the Old Madison Pike area. I kind of want to zone in on what I just mentioned, the 1,475 calls and what we're calling the Priority One Zone. This plan identifies four zones to focus on and given priority of what we think is the best return on investment to the community should we adopt this plan and implement it. Priority One Zone would be the, I don't know if that was me or somebody else, but the northwest quadrant of Research Park Boulevard and University Drive in Old Monrovia. Priority Zone Number Two would be Wind Drive near Calhoun College in Old Madison Pike. Priority Zone Three, the focus area, would be at Bradford in Wind Drive. And then Priority Zone Four would be Sparkman and University, just northwest of the UH campus. So the HPD calls for service for the Priority One Zone area. We took those and did a little deeper dive because it had the most calls for service. And I want to show you those. The entire area that had a recorded caseload from where HPD got a call from service and a case was made once they had arrived and evaluated the situation totaled 1,269 actual documented cases out of the 1,475. This chart represents 1,002 of those 1,269 actually filed complaints. So you can see over 300 arrests, breaking, entering of automobiles was right at 75. This is for one calendar year. Theft of property was over 200. Drug activity was almost 100 cases. Harassment to someone in the public is over 50. Fraudulent use of credit or debit is about 25 for the year. Menacing or causing a threat to someone is almost at 100. Assault was right at 20. Criminal mischief with property damage was almost at 50, and robbery and burglary was over 50, right at 60. So you can see there's a need for this urban renewal plan, especially just in this one section, and I want to go into details of plan, how we can reverse this trend. It was very concerning to us through the big picture process and something we thought we needed to bring to the council for your consideration. So the plan. The Research Park East Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan has been developed in concurrence with the vision and objectives of both the city's comprehensive master plan, you know, more commonly known as the Big Picture, and the Cummings Research Park Master Plan. So it is in concert and vision of both of those plans of what the city and the community desires those places to be. The planned area is approximately 500 acres, shown in yellow here. It's predominantly bound to the north by University Drive, to the south to I-565, to the west, Research Park Boulevard, and predominantly Wind Drive is the east boundary, all but the one small section in the northwest quadrant, which would be Sparkman. The goal statement of the plan. The Research Park East Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan's predominant goal is to transform the planned area into a more economically viable, physically attractive, people-desirable, fully-developed, and highly-functional part of the community in and around Cummings Research Park. So the planned area, again, this is by parcel data, so you can see the number of parcels that's within the planned area. The planned objective, so, you know, if you so choose after the public hearing to adopt this plan, you know, what are our goals and objectives to come out of the plan? One is to eliminate the blight, the blighted or deteriorated conditions and blighting and deteriorating influences of the improved and unapproved property within the planned area. Eliminate underutilization, obsolete layout, diversity of ownership, defective or unusual title conditions that is preventing some of these properties from being able to be redeveloped. Restore the economic vitality of the planned area through a mix of compatible and appropriate land uses such as residential, office, retail, services, parks, and institutional uses. Promote and assist with the development of new urban centers, neighborhoods, commercial development, and business environments that will further strengthen Cummings Research Park, the adjacent neighborhoods, and the University of Alabama in Huntsville. Provide public improvement such as streets, upgrading utilities, lighting, sidewalks, parks, plazas, landscaping, sidewalk amenities, entertainment venues, and other applicable public infrastructure to create a safe and attractive environment for the overall community of Huntsville. Also, to revitalize and improve the appearance and conditions of properties along and within the Research Park East planned area. Promote and assist in the residential development within the planned area by establishing an environment for viable, mixed-use, urban-style neighborhoods of high density and design quality with appropriate amenities to provide long-term stability and success of the Huntsville community, including Cummings Research Park. Provide public open space opportunities which are lacking within the planned area to allow for recreational opportunities to the general public. So part of this plan requires an acquisition plan, both either by the city or partnering with private entities to get properties redeveloped. So the plan identifies these areas of focus. Again, the northwest quadrant of our Priority One Zone up near University Drive and Research Park Boulevard, the center node of Research Park East, which is Bradford in Wind, and then the old Chrysler Electronics Building adjacent to Calhoun Community College there at Wind Drive and Interstate I-565. Through evaluation of the planned area, the highlighted acquisition areas have been identified as locations that are contributing to the deterioration and blighting conditions within the planned area, and they are in need of redevelopment assistance. The city of Huntsville will work diligently in these acquisition areas to acquire parcels that are necessary for the implementation of the plan. That does not mean the city of Huntsville would necessarily purchase all of these pieces of property. We would just assist in trying to get those properties redeveloped, either through the new streets I mentioned of buying some right-of-way or working to make public park areas within this plan. So what are the public improvement plan? I briefly described those. So one is to create a light and block street network in the northwest portion of the planned area to create more density and improve utilization of existing properties. You see that up near the Sanderson Road, University Drive area. That is 105 acres that once was a very vibrant regional mall. We are very close to retail saturation. Through the big picture plan in the last three years, we have quickly identified that that can't be a regional mall anymore. We're almost at retail saturation. It's not going to be a mega mall. So 105 acres is a very large piece of property, and through our master plan and the big picture plan is to come in and make public improvements to make it smaller pieces of property for redevelopment that would encourage that urban center, that placemaking that everybody longs for in our city through the big picture plan. Create a Sanderson Road extension to 255 to allow for better connectivity and access through the park and to UAH from Research Park Boulevard. Improvements to Bradford Drive that would be more of a complete street-type format for Bradford Drive with high pedestrian activities as far as bicycle lanes, very wide sidewalks, improved lighting through the park to, again, encourage that mixed use within the park of being able to live, work, and play in Research Park like the master plan is suggesting. Improvements to Old Madison Pike. Old Madison Pike, as you're well aware, is a heavily-traveled road. It screams the image of Huntsville along I-565 and what our city looks like in Research Park. Again, creating that same type of intent as I explained for Bradford Drive, highly pedestrian, accessible, and highly visible from an aesthetic appeal. Improvements to Wind Drive, that would be the same, you know, highly visible, very accessible pedestrian activity and, you know, very appealing to the public to want to engage and be part of that core. Streetscape improvements within the planned area. And then the redevelopment of Wind Drive and Bradford Drive intersections to provide alternate uses that would enhance the livelihood of the planned area. As I mentioned to you when I showed you the utilization map, three of those four intersections is 100% vacant, so it is in need of redevelopment. The redevelopment of the University Drive-Sparkman Drive area to uses that would add community value to the nearby neighborhoods and the University of Alabama Huntsville. It's a very dilapidated structure that has recently in the process of being sold. It's at about 10% utilization and has some age and has experienced some crime. So not that we, you know, have the intent to go take that property over and become developers, but to reach out and search for developers that would assist in the redevelopment and with our effort of putting new public infrastructure in and around there, similar to what we've done downtown. You know, we did an urban renewal plan for downtown in the mid-'80s, identified the same type actions in infusion of the city and public infrastructure. It's taken a while to start to see the fruits of that labor, but I think in recent years you can see the results of just staying focused on that plan. So I mentioned the priority zones. Implementation of this urban renewal redevelopment plan would be carried out in multiple phases based on the availability of funding. In order to maximize the benefits to the community, the plan has identified priority zones that are recommended as an implementation sequence as funding is available. So Priority Zone One, I think when I showed you the raw data of creating these priority zones from a vacancy rate to a dilapidation to, you know, high crime, we put all those together to kind of focus on a prioritization zone. Priority One would be University Drive in the Old Monrovia area, the northwest quadrant of the planned area. Priority Two would be Old Madison Pike and Wind Drive coming to the southern end of that with the investment that Calhoun Community College is making is try to focus on livening up that campus area with the old Chrysler building that's been vacant now for many, many years. Priority Two would be, Priority Three, excuse me, would be the Bradford Drive-Wind Drive area. Again, that's probably the most critical and most utilized intersection of Research Park East. As you know, Redstone Federal Credit Union has expanded into a gorgeous campus in the southwest quadrant. The other three quadrants are 100% vacant. Priority Zone Four would be the University Drive and Sparkman Drive area. Again, I mentioned the condition of that just a few minutes ago. So what would be the next steps should you choose to move forward with this? One would be tonight for you to consider the adoption of the plan, and then two would be for the city to begin to identify funding options for implementation of the plan. As I mentioned before, the city will not do it by itself. You know, we need to set the conditions by making some public improvement. You know, we need to set the conditions by making some public improvements such that redevelopers want to come into this area and invest private dollars. The majority of this redevelopment will be private dollars, believing in the plan, believing in the area to reinvest in. The design of the public improvements that I mentioned for implementation. There'll be much discussion through the planning commission of bringing those forward and to the council of what, you know, those streetscapes would look like. Identify private development opportunities and partners to aid in the financial implementation and redevelopment of the plan area. As I mentioned, a lot of this property, predominantly all of this property is private. We own, we want private dollars to reinvest it. Schedule and implement a regular review and update of the plan, including any amendments that might be necessary. So I can tell you, the adoption of this plan, any changes that the city would desire to make would have to come before the council, and you would have to vote to amend the plan to accept those proposed changes. I'll take any questions or comments you may have, council.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the council on this matter? Ms. Reed?
Jackie Reed, Jack Holman Drive. I have a lot of questions. Why is this presented for the first time up here tonight to take a vote on it? Have you all seen this before? Any of you council members? Ever? Before tonight? Maybe you can answer me when I get through. Mom is the word when I ask you all something. But this is a big, big idea up here. Some developers are pushing. What's the zoning of this property over there anyway? Industrial development area? Nobody don't have any interest? I wish you'd had a work session so I could have got a lot of this out so I could tell the public.
Ms. Reed, we're going to address your questions when you...
Well, I have too many. You'll forget what I'm asking. It's a shame and a sin that you don't have a work session, Mayor Battle, all you council people, and bring this like we used to do before the public and the people, and let us find out what you're trying to do in this city. It's thought up here. And I remember one time that changing the name of Cummings Research Park came to the city, and Milton Cummings' daughter, and I happened to be there that night, blocked changing the name of Cummings Research Park. So we've been trying to get in there, and we're going to put residential and... Are you going to buy any of it? Are you going to do like you did Reed Hardware up on the Parkway and Terry's Pizza? I think it needs to go back to a work session and invite the public and let the public have some answers before any of you sit up there and vote on it. You do what you want to because you're going to anyway. Some of the developers has got in your pocket somewhere, and I can't see them and I don't know who they are. Yes, I'm accusing you of it. So if anybody can answer any questions, how much of that are you going to buy, the city? Are you changing the zoning? God bless you, is all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And Mr. Davis, can you address Ms. Reed's questions?
I'd be happy to.
What is the zoning? Did we get it before the council? Ms. Reed, I can answer that. We did get notice of it before the council, electronic notice of it. The next question is, are we going to buy any of it?
Mr. Chairman, you might, Mr. President, you might want to point out that it was introduced two weeks ago at the council meeting, two weeks ago, and we've had two weeks of conversation on it at least, and we've had months of conversation with the Research Park Board, with UAH, with other entities which are involved in this. And portions of it come in and it helps to re-modify that area when you start thinking about Old Madison Pike, and we're just, we're having a new building built on Old Madison Pike. Portions of it may be, may end up being that we end up Boulevard and Old Madison Pike from in front of Calhoun all the way up to Bridge Street, which opens up a whole new area that gives us a lot of flexibility in Research Park and also saves portions of Research Parks. One of the other sections is an intersection of Wind Drive and Bradford Drive. Erin Koschut is here from the chamber, and she's our director of Research Park, and, you know, she pointed out many months ago that we have had a homeless camp in that area. And, you know, there's some places in there where we have abandoned buildings that we need to be able to use this tool. And this gets, this tool gets us ahead of the process as we get in and start having our comprehensive plan, start having our plans for Research Park, and gives us a chance to move forward. The other one is, what's the zoning? Most of it is Research Park zoning, commercial zoning. What else, Mr. Davis?
Mayor said it best. First of all, council members, we did introduce this at the last council meeting to let the public aware that it'd be a public hearing. So this is kind of a work session before your vote tonight.
Yes.
The zoning, as the mayor pointed out, it's all Research Park office, and then the northern boundary is commercial. I can tell you, there are no residential properties in the plan. So there are no residential zoning districts within the plan area. We have sat down with UAH. They are greatly in favor of it, so is the Research Park Board. Another question that I think Ms. Reed had, would we purchase on this property? At this time, there is no answer for that. We very well could be purchasing property. But let me, let me let you know and the public know. The next step would be specific project plans. Those will be an amendment to this plan. So if we had, let's say, the Chrysler Electronics Building there on Wind Drive, and we had a developer come and said, we want you to do X public improvements, and we'll buy this and tear this down. That's a specific project plan. That's a plan we will present to council. You will adopt and vote to carry forward with that, and it will become an amendment to this plan tonight. So adopting this doesn't give us the power to go develop anything. As we come back with specific projects to carry out the vision of this plan that I just presented tonight, they will become amendments to this plan and something that you will have to adopt, something that the public will have much more information on before you vote on it. This is just setting a boundary and a vision and a desire to see this area redeveloped and become more vibrant to what it used to be.
And any actions, Mr. President, any actions in this process will have to be voted on by the council. So each one will come back to council.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling?
I agree with what Ms. Reed said about, you know, we want the public to know what we're doing, and I think the mayor and his staff have done a pretty good job in addition to being introduced at the last meeting. I see our friends from the news media here, and my guess is it'll probably be something that the public will see on the ten o'clock news and possibly even tomorrow morning. And I noticed that while Mr. Davis was briefing the council, the slides that were up there were being shown on the screen of the TV broadcast. And just doing a ballpark estimate, I know we've got a bunch of city department heads and staff that are here, but as far as members of the general public here, there might be maybe thirty, thirty-five people in the, from the public in the audience, and we're glad to have you, free admission. But I'm going to assume that there are probably much more numbers of people are going to be watching this broadcast over the cable company. So I guess I like the idea of, work sessions are good, but I like the idea of using the forum of the media to get the word out and people, a lot of, right now, a lot of people in the comfort of their own living room are able to watch, they saw the slide presentation, and they've heard the questions that Ms. Reed had asked and the mayor and the others had responded to. So I think things have kind of changed a little bit where instead of it just being in a small room with a small number of people, we're using the modern media to get things out to the public more. And, you know, I think we all want to continue to do that. And Ms. Reed had some good questions, and I'm glad we were able to get responses to them.
And something I want to add, per the Alabama statute of creating an urban renewal and redevelopment plan, the process is to hold a public hearing during council, not a work session. So the reason that we advertised two weeks ago about the hearing and tonight or having the hearing is because it's required.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Kling, and thank you, Mayor Battle. Ms. Reed, did we satisfy all of your inquiries, or do you have another question or two?
You're going to let me say something else?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you. Anyway, the people sitting at the house tonight are going to hear what you're going to do. They don't have an input, and they won't care. It's too late. Why don't you take your little vote? Why don't you deal with one piece of section at a time? Why don't you handle it like you did Reed Hardware and Terry's Pizza? And if you're going to have to buy, and the developers don't come forward, why don't you bring in one of those four areas and let the public sort of absorb it in their minds and see what you're going to do? Why you bring it all up here at once and throw it out there when you don't even know? You don't know if you're going to buy it, you don't know if you're going to give it to the developer, you don't have enough information, as far as I'm concerned, to sit up there and make such a deal. But why don't you plant it out? I don't know who makes all the planning in the city. Someday, I've got to get somewhere where I can find out what's going on. I mean, you're thirty years, and I've yet to know how you come up with all these deals like this. But I wish that you'd take a work session and let the public absorb this. If I sitting at home tonight, it'd be kind of a disaster to hear this going on. Why don't you deal with one spot at a time? Thank you, I'm through.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the council on this matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion, council members. Yes, Mr. Russell.
I have questions for Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, you mentioned availability of funding in your presentation. Where might this funding come from? We have a capital plan that's already in place.
That's a very good question. You know, we, in the capital plan, there is an economic development line item in there. And also, you know, in Research Park, the sales of lots within Research Park, those funds remain in Research Park for the reinvestment. So a large portion of those public improvements will come from the Research Park funds through future land sales, both in the east and the west portions of the park. And then areas outside of Research Park along that University Drive corridor will probably come through our economic development. As I said, this is going to be a multi-phase, multi-year type process. We don't expect this to be resolved in two years, three years, five years. I would say at best, probably a ten-year plan at best. That'd be on a very aggressive plan.
Okay. And I know you don't know exactly right now if you're going to buy, if you're going to propose that the city buys some of the vacant land or some of the blighted land. But however, knowing some of those properties, and I fully believe, fully believe that you're going to propose that the city buy those properties?
And, you know, we could very well, that could wind up being the best approach. You know, the Research Park East land at one time the city owned. You know, we sold those lots for economic development, and there's some of those that have outlived their life. You know, they've been vacant for a long time, and there's been a lot of discussion at the Chamber of Commerce and Research Park Board, you know, should the city reclaim some of those, put it back to green space, and turn around and put it right back on the market like we did fifty years ago. So this plan just sets a vision and objectives, and as development comes forward or we fully vet through the Research Park Board and Chamber what the best means to happen, we'll certainly bring that to council. We will not do any of that without council action. We can't.
Yes, and I understand that. But what is the philosophy of coming into all these blighted areas in town and buying, the city bailing the landlords out and buying the land? You know, we're doing it in North Parkway, proposing South Parkway, now you're proposing Research Park. How do I convince the people I represent that this is a good idea?
Well, you know, if, I guess the best way to answer that with your citizens being where they are in the core of the city and mainly the southeastern portion of Hampton Cove, Cummings Research Park is the economic engine of all of North Alabama. You know, without it, we don't need, you know, seven Walmarts. We don't need fourteen McDonald's. You know, those things start to close, and those are in your neighborhood that you represent. You know, we don't need two regional malls of Bridge Street and Parkway Place Mall. You know, they, you know, we've got to have an economic engine, you know, twelve-point-nine billion-dollar economic engine annually. That affects every district that you represent up here tonight.
And why do you think the property gets blighted? Like, do we not have the regulations to keep the property up, or do we not enforce regulations, or is just something that happens?
You know, it, you know, it's a fine line. Community Development does a really good job. From the standpoint of what we regulate to consider a public health hazard necessarily is not the same as blighted. You know, it may not be a public health hazard, but it is in a condition such that redevelopment around that property is prohibited just due to the condition of that. Doesn't mean that it is a community development violation per se. Could be, but it's just of age and dilapidation such that these relocations and redevelopments that have been occurring, they're just wanting to go to something that's more vibrant, something more that their employees want to be around. You know, it's more that environment. It's a very fine line. We will, we will take that with respect and seriousness.
Yeah, and I agree with you that Research Park is the economic engine for Huntsville. And I've always thought maybe it should be held to a higher standard than the rest of Huntsville, and maybe the city should fund it differently than the rest of Huntsville. You know, the streets should be cleaner, the trees should be trimmed better, things like that. And maybe that would keep it from being blighted. Is there any thought in that as we go forward to require tougher restrictions and to put more money into the upkeep of the park?
There is, there is. You know, we're finishing up in conjunction with Research Park Board and the Chamber of Commerce and update to the master plan. And those are some of the things I think you could, and I think Ms. Reed asked, are we going to rezonate? I think very well, but by the time the plan's on, you're going to have some different zoning in here. Research Park of today are not what we designed and developed fifty years ago. They're not large, massive campuses. They're more of an urban setting, even though they're a research park, but they're very dense. Our current zoning in Research Park don't allow that. So, you know, I think as we go forward and we finish this plan, you'll see some different zoning and some different standards in Research Park, so it lasts another fifty years, so that when we're here ten or fifteen years from now, we say it's not a twelve-point-nine billion-dollar economic impact, it's a twenty-billion-dollar economic impact. Without being bold and having the wherewithal to do this, we could sit here five years from now and say it's a three-billion-dollar impact. You know, we certainly don't want to be sitting here talking about that.
And, Mr. Davis, I'm certainly in favor of this. I'm going to vote for it tonight. I am concerned about the city land banking land, you know, and buying these blighted properties, and it's just a concern I have, and I've expressed it before, but it's just, I can't say it's right, I can't say it's wrong, just have a concern.
And let you know, we will not be purchasing property at the land bank. The only time we would be engaged in doing something that is, like I said, we would have a specific project plan that we would present to the council as an amendment to this plan that might include our participation in the purchase. But us going out and buying those properties, we saw, and we're going to prospect redevelopment, we certainly don't have the funds to do that, and we don't think that's wise to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, Dr. Robinson.
In addition to the land acquisitions, I'm, you've also mentioned some infrastructure improvements with the new roads that will be cut and other infrastructure improvements. Are there any other commitments that the city will need to make, financial commitments that the city will need to make in this plan?
You know, it's hard to say. We'll certainly make all those public improvements over time. You know, we, as I talked, entertainment options. You know, we, our vision through the big picture plan has looked at things as a grass-lawn area for public performances, somewhere that the community can gather. You know, I can tell you, in the western portion of our corridor in the capital plan, we've looked for a park for many, many years and have driven many miles trying to put that in the right location. Either there's not enough land available, or it's too much land to buy at one time because of some condition of the property owner. We've looked at, you know, can we do that here? Is there a place to have a west recreational opportunity? Both the big picture and the Cummings Research Park Master Plan has identified a large gap for the west portion of our city, and it's been a high-growth area. So, you know, we don't have established parks. It's been in West Huntsville for thirty and forty years like we have in other parts of the city. So to say what all those public improvements would be, I think time will tell. Again, a project-specific plan will be brought back to this council for you to vote up or down. You may choose to vote for it or say, you know, that's, we don't want to put that kind of vision out there. We hope that won't be the case with the city, because we will not bring you something that we don't think the community will enjoy or have a return on investment.
Given that you are in such an early stage of developing the plan, I don't know if you could even answer this, but Mr. Russell asked about sources of funding, and I'm just kind of wondering, how much funding are we going to be looking at? Do you even have a ballpark idea of what we're looking for?
We don't, we don't. And that's why I said, should you adopt this plan tonight and let us start the implementation, the planning department, engineering department, we'll start some budgeting plans, really kind of doing some sketches, some preliminary engineering of those road improvements we spoke of, and that'll start to glean a budget, and then you'll start seeing those implemented over time, either in the Cummings Research Park Fund that's for the redevelopment and improvement of those public infrastructures, or it will be in a capital plan that you will, again, vote on. So I wanted to ensure the public, anything moving forward in this plan, you're not authorizing anything but to go forward with this vision. There will be many, many votes to come with this council to actually implement it.
One final question. You mentioned retail saturation. Is there such a thing as a commercial office space saturation? I've heard that that might be an issue for Cummings Off, for Cummings Research Park, particularly given the development of the Gateway Complex.
Yeah.
Is that a concern at all?
You know, I kind of answered that question. I get that asked a lot when I go speak to luncheons and stuff, and I usually answer... lunches and stuff, and I usually answer that question with a question. It's according what the environment's like. You know, if we create a progressive environment, we're kinda known as a progressive city in that we're bold in the actions we take, and we create that environment, that surplus of office space will not last. If we sit and wait for things to come, absolutely, we can have a major saturation of office space. So according to how aggressive we are as a city, I think we've done a very good job. You know, there were some office space, there's some vacancies out there. We'll make no bones about it. But we think that sets us up for the future rounds of BRAC, and that a lot of the military personnel that were in leased space off post, the arsenal's been able to build new facilities and put those guys on post, which protects those commands in future rounds of BRAC, which was a smart move. And we'll grow from that, and we'll backfill that office space. But it's gonna take a plan like this that creates that next industry or that next corporate office we're trying to recruit. When they come into that park, it doesn't look old and tired, it looks like something they wanna be part of, that they can recruit that next millennial, that it's an easy way to go recruit those employees, and then we don't have to worry about the lack of office space, it's more of, can we get more on the ground?
And with fifty-five economic development projects on the books right now, that actually becomes an advantage to you as you work with these to recruit companies to come here.
And the people we routinely compete with, you know, the Austin, Texas of the world, Research Park Triangle in Raleigh, you look at their parks, even National Park up in the DC area, they've been bold to do this. They've been bold to say, look, you know, we realize there's some blighted conditions, and it's a lot of hard work, but this is the most critical investment we have in our community, and we're not gonna let it slip away, and that's why we brought this to you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, council members?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dr. Showers?
Thank you. I made the notion, I support what we're doing. I'm looking beyond today.
Yes, sir.
However, I am concerned yet about the blight that exists in other parts of the city, in the residential areas. I'm excited about this right here, but I'm more concerned about the blight that exists across the city and other areas, south, north, other parts of the city. Where does the plan that's gonna come to us? When will we get a plan similar to this, that we can identify those blighted areas? Arizona City's got buildings been standing for ten or fifteen years, empty buildings across the city. I'm concerned of that, would you weigh in on that?
Dr. Showers, I'd love to. Actually, Dr. Robinson actually sent me an email with the same question. As I said, this is the second urban renewal plan the city of Huntsville has ever partook in. In the early eighties, we did one for downtown, it was mainly for the public housing, setting those zones and districts up, and then trying to focus on some redevelopment. That's been a long time ago. You see sister cities using this as a tool. We think this is a good start, a good area that we can have some success in. But we do think that we can, should with your support, bring more urban renewal plans, especially along the Parkway, in north and south, you know, you look there, there's forty and fifties era buildings that are dilapidated, boarded up, that no one will rent. You know, they've had for lease signs on them for five, six, seven years, and nothing changes year to year. A plan like this is a way to, as I told Dr. Robinson, force that redevelopment to occur, to force that new energetic infusion of cash, of private funds, not city funds, in doing that. So, Dr. Showers, to answer your question, I could see the future of having two or three more of these plans in certain areas of the city. We wanna use this as a test case, and hopefully later in the year, or early next year, come and talk to you guys about other sections of the city. We think this could be a tool of the future for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
And if I could come?
Councilman Kline.
Oh, you're the mayor battle?
Go ahead, I'll play.
Beauty before age.
Go ahead, Mayor Battle. Go ahead, Mayor Battle.
You know, one of the things that we have to look at in this process is, back in the nineteen eighties, when we sold Research Park East, I was on council, and we were all under the impression that there were deed restrictions, that there were codices, that there were, there were things in there that we felt would keep the park up to certain standards and everything. You know, years later, you find out that a lot of those deed restrictions never made it into the books, or those that did, don't apply today. So part of this urban renewal is to look at some of those codices, some of those deed restrictions, and find out what we actually need today. Do we need more density? Do we need less density? Do we need an association in Research Park that helps keep the area beautified? Do we need some, do we need to look at and make sure that, you know, as people purchase land, that it's mostly end-users purchasing land, or, you know, or do we want investors in that property? You know, some of those questions have to be answered, some of those can be answered through an urban renewal process, and it gives us a chance to reset that area as we move forward. So that's, that is one of the reasons for this urban renewal plan right now, is it gives us a chance to reset Research Park, especially Research Park East, which is fifty, sixty years old, which does have some buildings that are vacant and have been vacant for a long time and are almost abandoned. So that's what we have gotta look at as a city, how do we get those abandoned buildings back into a productive role? And to do what the city invested our money into in Research Park back fifty years ago, so that we can provide jobs and we can provide a high-tech environment, that we can provide more, add more to that economy that is provided by Research Park East.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Councilman Kline.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Davis, have y'all done any type of copputation on the enterprise account that Research Park has from its land purchases, to see how far that would go as far as doing some of these things that you're talking about?
We have. Councilman Kline, you know, we make an investment in Research Park out of those funds very diligently. We did a lot of paving last year. This summer, we'll do more paving in Research Park. It will not leave enough funds to fully implement any of this. So naturally, we'll slowly be very calculating where we do that. That's why we create the priority zones of where we wanna do that. That's why we focused outside of Research Park first, in that priority zone. One, it was contributing the most blight, had the highest percentage of crime, and had the most deterioration of buildings. So naturally, if we can get that reset, it infuses more people who wanna come into the park, buy those vacant properties, make a capital investment, so that purchase of that vacant land, we in turn just reinvest it in the park, to create that environment, that streetscape that we all want, that the businesses that are out there, they're asking for it. And we certainly want them to remain in Huntsville, Alabama, and not move to Research Park Triangle, or Austin, Texas, or Seattle, Washington. We've made a huge capital investment here. So, like I said, this plan sets a vision, it protects the area that we have a tremendous investment in, that is supplying jobs for every portion of this city. Fourteen counties in North Alabama come in. As mayor says it very eloquently all the time, one hundred and twenty thousand workers come into this city every day and leave. So, you know, this is an economic engine of North Alabama and the Tennessee Valley, and we've gotta protect it. And that's what this plan will do.
I like the idea of the investment and the attention that y'all are giving to this and other central areas of the city, because you're right, if we don't take care of the central part of the city, you know, there's can just be a mass exodus, and we certainly wanna keep that. I guess one concern I have is, I know we've had a lot of projects we've been talking about lately, and some of them are economic development, we're gonna be talking, I guess in a couple weeks, about traffic flow, traffic congestion, and I guess similar to what Mr. Russell had said, we just got X dollars and, you know, in our capital plans, and, you know, we're gonna have to make a pecking order on, you know, what our priorities are and how we're gonna do it. So perhaps in some ways, I might be looking to try to streamline some of these things. But at the same time, you know, you are definitely on the right track as far as bringing this. I know y'all been working on it for a long time, and I think it's something we certainly wanna see. But again, it's the dollars that we have, you know, the needs that we have as far as roads and traffic flow, things that we're doing throughout the city, economic development inducements that we're doing, North Huntsville, South Huntsville, the central area and everything. So I guess I'm just trying to make sure we have X dollars to spend, and we certainly wanna make the best use of that money, and, you know, just wanna wave a flag about that concern. But I'm gonna support this, and I do think this is gonna be a very interesting, very positive process that we're gonna be going through on this.
Councilman Kline, I think that's very well said. I can tell you the mayor and his administration's intent is not to take any funding away that we're putting in any district's neighborhoods annually for its street resourcing, sidewalk repair, and divert it to this plan. We stay committed to our neighborhoods, they're just as critically important as Research Park. So, you know, we will not be diverting funding through the neighborhood capital plans that y'all are routinely seeing us, the drainage accounts, the sidewalks, the resourcing, to do this. So I say we'll be multi-phase, a many, multi-year plan, and as funding allows.
One last thing, and we're gonna grow, we're gonna progress, but are we getting to a point where we're growing too fast, too quick, and the infrastructure, I don't know, police precincts, fire stations, road, road flow lanes, those types of things need to catch up?
I don't think so. I think we're in good shape. We're probably seventy percent through the analysis, getting ready for the work session. I can tell you, I'm very happy with what I'm seeing. There are some challenges with some congestion in some areas of the city. I think the beauty of it is, is, you know, the restore of roads, we knew where those were at. That's what Mayor Battle fought for, to get a fifty-fifty partnership in those investments, and two of those five projects are on the ground in construction, and this fall, the third will come. And then also, you know, we committed twenty-five million dollars a year to roads, and we're starting to identify those. So I think as far as infrastructure, you know, the police precincts, I think are well-served. I know Mr. Hamilton and Police Chief are looking at options for possibly west Huntsville that's in there. And we've built several fire stations, so, you know, I'd let those guys address their field that they're experts in, but from a public infrastructure standpoint, I think we're very well poised. I think if you know us well, that's what our capital plan's always focused on, is continually investment in that public infrastructure, and that's the reason we have Polaris and GE Aviation, and those guys coming in is they see that. It was one of Polaris's number-one things, they said, you know, you got down to three sites, and the one thing that set you apart is, you got a ten-year capital plan, but you just didn't talk, the council adopted it, you know, and it had to be carried out. So I think we're okay in that, in those regards.
We probably wouldn't, excuse me, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation about the dollars and cents if, you know, the state, you know, lived up to its previous commitments to us on road projects. I think at one point, we were talking about eighty cents on the dollar coming back. Mayor Battle, I think, did yeoman's work, fighting to salvage what he could out of the state. And I remember, you probably remember the, was it the ten-year, four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar plan? And nobody, knows, no city in the entire state probably puts in nearly as much money as we do in our state-related roads that we have.
Making great gains now, though. Absolutely we are.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kline. And most of my questions have been answered by other council members' inquiries, and I thank you for that. Mr. Davis, I really applaud you guys for being proactive. I know when I served on the Cummings Research Park Board, we were at a ninety-seven percent occupancy, and my last tenure on that board, we were down in the eighties. I know Mr. Russell is on that board now, and I'm wondering if that perhaps was attributed to a lot of the dilapidated buildings and things of that nature.
It is certainly the reason for the plan tonight, sir.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, council members, any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Six B one, public hearings to be set. Six B one is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance amending Article seventy-five Alcoholic Beverage Establishment Regulations, Section seventy-five point three permitted establishment districts by amending subsection seventy-five point three point one Neighborhood Business C one and Neighborhood Business C two districts, and deleting subsection seventy-five point three point seven Village Business C six district, and amending Article ninety-two Board of Adjustments, Section ninety-two point five Powers and Duties subsection ninety-two point five point three permitted uses as special exceptions by amending subsection ninety-two point five point three subsection two and subsection ninety-two point five point three subsection twenty-eight to update language concerning Village Business C six district. This will be set March the twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen, at our regular council meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
Motion has been made, properly second, motion made by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Six B two is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance amending Article ninety-two Board of Adjustments, Section ninety-two point five Powers and Duties subsection ninety-two point five point three permitted uses as special exceptions by amending subsection ninety-two point five point three subsection two, subsection ninety-two point five point three subsection eighteen, subsection ninety-two point five point three subsection thirty-three, and subsection ninety-two point five point three subsection thirty-six to delete certified mailing and language. This will be set March twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen, at our regular council meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion?
Mr. President, I realize we're just setting the public hearing, but could we give somebody who could give us like a thirty-second explanation for the benefit of the public?
Absolutely, Mr. Kline. Yes, Mr. Jim.
Council members, this is, this is going to be an amendment to the ordinance to allow for mailings to be consistent with the rest of the ordinance, to be single regular mailing, not certified mailing. We do have some certified mailing requirements, but we're gonna have to use regular mail, which is also consistent with the clerk treasurer's mailing policy.
Thank you, Mr. McGuffey. Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at agenda item number seven. Thank you, Mr. McGuffey. Communications and reports. Seven A is communications from the public. As I call your name, if you will go to the microphone, you'll have approximately three minutes to address the council. State your name and address, please. Mr. Adam Morgan.
Good evening, council. This is Adam Morgan, I'm from Spring Hill, Tennessee, two-eight-seven-six Duplex Road. I'm here tonight to ask for your support in voting down the Resolution sixteen dash zero six nine, and I wanted to take a minute to explain a brief history, and then pinpoint where the error is at the, in the resolution. On January fifth, Chempro Services bid on the contract Herbicide Services contract. This contract entails chemical maintenance of the city's drainage, ditches, and sewer outfalls. After the bids were submitted, we requested a bid tabulation. On January sixth, the procurement office sent us the requested bid tabulation. We saw that we were not the low bidder. After noting the low bidder and knowing the amount of the job, we went online to check and verify the low bidder was, if the low bidder was indeed an Alabama general contractor license holder. This is standard procedure for our company. We discovered they are not in possession of a current license. Between January sixth and January fifteenth, we made contact with the procurement office, gave them the information, as well as made contact with the landscape department overseer of the work. We were told via phone call that the low bidder had a pending status with their contractor license, which we suspected bidder indicated. We then followed up with the Alabama Board of General Contractors to inquire on what pending status is. We were told that pending status is unlicensed status. Next, we emailed the procurement office on Friday, January the fifteenth, given written notice that we sincerely believe our interpretation of the law was correct. Chempro Services patiently waited to hear back from the city. Our phone call was eventually returned on the twenty-seventh via voicemail. The procurement office explained that they had given the information to their legal department and stated that this work does not require a contractor's license, and that their boss required, it only, said it only requires a license from the Department of Ag. Also, the bid was awarded to the following day, was to be awarded the following day at the council meeting. We've been waiting for twelve days, and this seemed to be an attempt to run out the clock. We felt that we were not being heard. After that, we thought that our licensure, the licensure requirement information was incorrect as well. We then reached out to the Alabama Board of State Contractors again on the twenty-eighth for a formal interpretation. The inquiry developed into an investigation. I was asked to submit a copy of the bid to the investigator. He then later called me and told me he had spoke with a city official, told the city[1752.44] with a city official, told the city that they had to award the work to a license holder. This report has been filed with the board and will be adjudicated on February seventeenth. The low bidder of that will also be fined for bidding on the job without a license. I then attended the meeting that night to see if it was brought up. The only reference to this in the agenda was new business item G. All of these items were unnamed, were unnamed bids were passed in one motion. Not knowing protocol or when to object, I stayed around to talk to the city attorney. He suggested I meet with the finance administration the next day, eight a.m. I did. At that meeting, I was instructed by the attorney, city procurement administrator, and city finance administrator to submit a formal letter contesting the bid award. We did that day. My letter was, was received, and we waited to hear.
Mr. Morgan, your time is up, sir. Do you need another minute?
Yes, sir, I do.
Council members?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll fast forward. I thought I was getting another three minutes. Basically, we were told to visit the website today around noon and see the resolution. I believe the resolution is inaccurate and also harms my company who follow the rules that was best, as the best qualified bidder. Therefore, this resolution should not be passed. I ask the city to consider awarding to the next lowest bidder, Chempro Services, to avoid re-advertising. This protects the competitive ilk and lawful intentions of quality contrast contractors. I ask the city not to vote for this resolution. If passed, it would re-advertise, restarting the clock for a company who violated the law, giving them a second bite at the apple. If they do, why would the city vote to re-advertise this bid? What good would that do companies like Chempro Services?
And are you finished, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Morgan, since this item is on the agenda under fifteen R, I will hold that item, and we'll take up your concerns at that particular time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don Casalino, Casalano?
I'm here to speak tonight regarding the proposal to, for y'all to appropriate money for the grant process for McThornmore Acres. I'm curious, Jessica White, the preservation consultant for the city of Huntsville, she can speak to the logistics of this better than I can. Can we make space for her at some point on this agenda as well?
Ms. Casalano, she will be able to address the council at the end of the meeting.
Okay, great. So you all are gonna have a proposal tonight in order to appropriate funding for this. I just wanted to assure you that the Historic Huntsville Foundation will also appropriate funds to help with this project. We plan to contribute a thousand dollars towards this project. After the, the, the potential listing of McThornmore Acres goes forward tonight, we realize that Historic Council Foundation and our community partners in this neighborhood have work to do. Building consensus for the national register nomination with this neighborhood requires meetings, it requires discussions, it requires answering questions, and we're fully committed to this process as we go forward. We think it's very exciting, the possibility of having the state's first space-age historic district, and we're just absolutely thrilled to death that the council has been such an effective partner for us. So we hope that, we thank you for voting on this. We hope that you will.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Kline.
Well, Ms. Casalano, just very briefly, can you explain to the public the difference between historic district and National Registry of Historic Places and what it is that we're talking about for McThornmore Acres?
I absolutely will, but Jessica White's gonna do a much better job of that. A, a listing to the National Registry of Historic Places is basically putting property on a list of special historic places. It's overseen by the, by the Park Service, the National Park Service, and it absolutely imposes no restrictions or no inhibitions on a private property's owner's right to affect their property in any way, shape, or form. It is honorific in, in nature and quality. You all were having a conversation about how to infuse investment in areas. Well, you know, we have four wonderful examples of where that has been done through National Register nominations with Low Mill, Merrimack, and Lincoln Mill Village. Those neighborhoods have National Registered designations. So that is a National Registered designation. We also have three neighborhoods in Huntsville that have local status, and that's where you get the, the, the guidelines. But we're not proposing that for McThornmore Acres.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. White worked for the city, so it would be very appropriate for her to discuss this under fifteen double C when we get there.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Casalano.
Thank you.
Diane Walls? Okay.
Yes, I'm Brian Walls. I'm a resident of McThornmore Acres, and just had a brief statement up that follows up with the last speaker. I'm here with my wife, who is, she's the coordinator of the Rocket View Neighborhood Association, which includes McThornmore, and we're near UAH Research Park, Redstone Arsenal, and of course, the Marshall Space Flight Center. We have several neighbors here with us from McThornmore Acres, as well as eleven letters from other residents regarding our neighborhood's nomination to become a historic district. We're here to enthusiastically endorse the city of Huntsville's efforts to list McThornmore Acres to the National Register of Historical Places, of Historic Places, excuse me. The neighborhoods that supported the Start of America space program are a precious part of Huntsville's heritage and are worthy of honorable recognition. We look forward to working with the Historic Huntsville Foundation and the Huntsville Historic Preservation Commission toward this honor. Thanks for your consideration and support.
Thank you, Mr. Walls. And Ms. Jackie Reed?
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing the public to get involved. I'm still having a hard time with your little microphones, but we'll live with it. Thank you for allowing the public to get involved, which is me, of course. I want to wish everyone Happy Valentine's Day. I'm saddened because my hundred-and-one-year-old mother-in-law, she finally passed away and gone to a better place. Her ideals of me through life was the mean, don't ever die, and it's me and you, and I loved her for that, 'cause we were tight. She's gone on to a better place. I appreciate that. I'm also saddened tonight to bring up the Historical Board, and they're sitting in this meeting here tonight. But Mr. Sam Sitrana went to the Historical Board five or six times, I told you in the last council meeting. He never could get that building torn down. Eighty-nine years old, six times he begged everybody to the Historical Board. Nobody listened to him. We want to do great in this city. We want to do something for everybody, but we didn't do nothing for him. He gave his property away today. Fifty-five thousand dollars for a lot. So I want the Historical Board and all you all that put in the Historical Board to jump and shout tonight. He got through with you. I tried to get him not to give in on it, but he did. That is sad, sad. Community Development City could tear it down. The Historical Board stood the ground. I believe a hundred percent need to sign to get in that historical areas. Don't ever reach to get my property or none of my family's, please, 'cause I know what comes on and I know what goes on over there, and I think it's very sad for him tonight that he had to give that property away. It'd been worth a, some of you got real estate license up there? You need to hire a real estate person. Maybe I could qualify for that if you can't find another job application for me, since I'm unemployed. Think about it. Maybe I could help you come up with something better than what I see is going on. Anyway, I'm glad to see all of you stood together on the Research Park Board. I knew you was gonna vote for it. I could've told you that was gonna happen. You talk about the Research Park Board, though. Have they paid off that fifteen-million-dollar debt out there to the Sewell family where you bought that four-hundred-something acres? Has that debt been satisfied yet? Somebody can answer that directly. You've gone out and joined hands with Limestone County for to develop seven-hundred acres. Seven-hundred acres? Have you got that other paid for? And you know, you talk about blight throughout the city. It's everywhere. There's buildings empty all over this city. When I see you sitting up there, keep making deals, and we got empty buildings and blights all over this city. Traffic, like Kline keeps bringing up, you keep blowing smoke and talking about things, but I don't see no action going on. When you talk about it, put some strength behind it.
Ms. Reed, your time is up. Do you need another minute?
Yes, please.
Council members?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Four-hundred-and-fifty-two acres, you took off, you want to go in the arsenal out there and develop, where the Indians gave you a million dollars, so now you've taken up with the Indians, too. You annex four-hundred-and-fifty-two acres into, into the arsenal. You're gonna develop that, too, for them. I want to know where you're gonna get all this money. Go to the market. We got a triple-A bond rating. You can go borrow some more money. Y'all are good at that. That might be good. This Uber or Uber or whatever y'all trying to put into Huntsville tonight, I would like for the public to know more about that before you take the taxicabs down. In this city, you're gonna put small businesses out again. When you bring that in, you want to be like Birmingham and all the big cities, so I would like for whoever's gonna, Mr. Brown, maybe, where you're gonna park the cars, how much it's gonna cost, if, if that's on the agenda, and y'all gonna pass that. The news said it was gonna be on there tonight. So if you've had a work session, you got somebody here to speak about it, I sure would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Your, your time is up. Thank you, ma'am.
Always. Thank you.
Thank you so kindly. And Ms. Reed, we will address your question regarding the parking, where the cars are gonna be parked, when we take that up on the agenda. Also, Mayor Battle, would you or your administration address whether or not the Sewell property has been paid off, if that debt has been paid off?
We, we never purchased the Sewell property. We have never purchased the Sewell property. It's always been under option for the past seven years. The option is because it is a TVA-certified site. It is a fifteen-hundred-acre site for industrial recruitment, made for mega projects. TVA sponsors those type, type projects and wants to make sure that we have land capacity, just as in Research Park, we want to have buildings there so that when someone wants to move in, they can move in. We have land out there, and we have options on that property, but we have never purchased that property, and we don't owe, what was it, seven-hundred million dollars or seventy million dollars on that? We do not owe anything on that property. We have an option on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Battle. Council members, we're now at agenda item number eight, Huntsville Utility Items. Eight A is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase LED lights for Chase Electric Operations Center, PR one zero two zero four six zero eight, brought by Huntsville Utilities. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to consolidate approve eight A through eight G.
Second.
Motion has been made to consolidate and approve agenda items eight A through G. Second, properly second. Is there discussion?
Mr. President, if we could, I, I'm in agreement and support Mr. Russell's motion. Can we just get a reading of all those items for the record, so the public will understand what it is that we're doing?
Absolutely, Councilman Kline. I do plan to read them, and for the purpose of discussion, you all can certainly ask any questions as a result of that. Ready for the question? All in favor?
And, Mr. Chairman, my motion is consolidated approved, so if, if there's any questions or discussion about any items, I need to withdraw those. Otherwise, the whole point of the consolidation approval is to not discuss them?
Absolutely. Is there any?
Yep.
Okay. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Eight A is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase LED lights for Chase Electric Operations Center, PR one zero two zero four six zero eight, brought by Utilities. Eight B is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase outside professional services for aerial photography, PR one zero two zero four nine one seven, brought by Utilities. Eight C is a resolution authorizing the approval for installation of fiber optic cable and associated equipment, contract labor, consulting and engineering services, WBS FIB Networks, BB, brought by Utilities. Eight D is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase two-hand-held natural gas leak detectors, PR one zero two zero four four seven eight, brought by Utilities. Eight E is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase an MBW vapor extraction unit and equipment, PR one zero two zero five five eight two, brought by Utilities. Eight F is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase ball valves for the South Parkway Water Treatment Plant, PR one zero two zero four nine one five, brought by Huntsville Utilities. Eight G is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase a gas chromatograph, PR one zero two zero five five seven nine, brought by Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now at board appointments. Council members, we have two items on board appointments to be voted on that involve the same appointment, nine A two and nine A three. Nine A one is a resolution appointing John Powell to the Board of Examination and Appeals for Construction Industries for a term to expire September the twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, nominated January the twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, at our regular council meeting, brought by Dr. Showers. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Russell. Discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Nine A two is a resolution appointing Carla Cliff to the Huntsville Public Library Board for a term to expire February the tenth, two thousand and twenty, nominated January the twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, at our regular council meeting, brought by Dr. Showers. Is there a?
Move to approve?
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kline. Discussion?
May I?
Uh, Dr. Robinson.
As, as was noted, we do have two nominations for a position for the library board. That's a little unusual, but I think it's actually a good thing that we have candidates that are both interested and able to serve, and we have both of these nominations for consideration tonight. The library board is an important board because the library contributes significantly to the quality of life of our community, and the library, Huntsville Public Library is one of the highest circulations in the state. It's rare that a vacancy occurs on that board, but since a vacancy did occur, it's an important nomination. I actually spoke with the board members to find out what skill set they were looking for and that they need at this time, and they identified a very specific skill set that they need. They're getting ready to engage in a capital improvement plan. Many of their facilities are aging and in need of renovation or replacement, so they, they are looking for a board member who has a skill set in facilities renovation and construction. They're also making a concerted effort to reduce utility costs and to, so they can be better stewards of taxpayer money. They currently have no one on the board that fills those skills, and they have requested a board member with that specific skill set. So my question is, how does this nominee fill that skill set? We have a bio in front of us, and I don't see anything on that bio that suggests that she has the skills that the library board needs. So that's my question of the, of the council. I'm hoping there is someone that can answer that.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Kline.
Well, first of all, Dr. Robinson's right, and it's a, a tough, a tough choice, two outstanding people who offer themselves to this community, and we're fortunate to have this type of people, because this caliber that we have is what makes our boards that we have throughout the city work so well. The individual that's been nominated, who I seconded, has an extensive background in being a librarian and also in education. These are things that would certainly be relevant for the library. In addition, I noticed in her bio that she has extensive awards and extensive community involvement. Mr. Pippen's someone who I've known for, you know, twenty-five years, and even before that, I came on the council. He's certainly outstanding, what he's done with economic development, and he would be a good person as far as construction. But again, we have two tough choices to work through, and we're fortunate to have those, but unfortunately, there's only one vacancy. If, should there ever become a future vacancy, certainly, Mr. Pippen would be very high for consideration on this board or perhaps any other board relating to economic development or conceivably even the Huntsville Utilities Board in the future. I don't, I don't know. But it's a tough choice, and we are fortunate that we do have these caliber of people who offer themselves to the community.
Thank you, Councilman Kline.
Mr. President?
And we'll come back with, to you, Dr. Showers, Dr. Robinson.
If I may add, the, again, it is the direct request of the library board to have someone on that board with a background in facilities and utility costs. No one is better suited than the former CEO of Huntsville Utilities, whom, for whom I've nominated for this, this position. A lib, this librarian that has been nominated isn't even a librarian who has any experience at all with community libraries. She's an academic librarian. It's very diff, very different. If you look at the bio, her experience doesn't even list any experience as, as a volunteer with the library association. So I, I think, I think it, when, when we make a, an appointment to these boards, it has an impact on the boards potentially for years, and we really need to be mindful that the city, by making contributions to the library, is investing our, our taxpayer dollars, and by appointing that board, we need to make sure a board that is going to, to, to make the best use of those dollars. The right skill set is going to be absolutely critical in this appointment, and it would be wrong to appoint anyone that doesn't have the skill set the board has specifically asked for.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
Can I respond?
Dr. Dr. Showers, they will come back to you, Councilman Kline.
Mr. President, I was gonna call for the question on this item. I don't know what Mr. Kline's gonna do.
Okay. Well, just, just comment. Again, we have a tough choice to make, but again, the buck stops here with the city council. We're the ones that, that make the decisions. We take recommendations from these boards. The, you know, the caliber of educational background that this person would bring, I think, would certainly be very helpful. As in the past, Jeff Easter and the Facilities Department have been very much involved in the capital maintenance of the library, because the library is a, basically, an extension of the city. It's a city agency, and certainly I have confidence in Mr. It's a city agency, and certainly I have confidence that Mr. Easter will be able to provide that assistance. At the same time, we look at the, the community as a whole. It's not within the district I represent. This is an individual with an educational background, familiar with library, working on getting her, her doctorate, and she, she comes from North Huntsville. And again, we want the library board, which gets, you know, millions of dollars in appropriations from the council, I think it's over four million, you know, to represent the community as a whole. But again, tough choices, and we got to make a decision, and that's, I guess that's where my thinking is at this point.
And thank you, Councilman Clean. Any further discussion? Ready for the question?
Dr. showers called for the question. Are you acknowledging that? Is there a second to that?
I'm acknowledging
Dr. showers called for the question? Then we need to know if there's a second.
Ready for the question? Is there a second?
Second, I get
Second by Councilman Clean, ready for the question?
I vote no.
Dr. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Clean?
So debates continue. You didn't, you have to have
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Two thirds of vote for the question to pass. The question didn't pass, so debate continues?
We'll continue with the debate. Any further discussion?
Wait, wait one minute. Mr. Russell, number one, parliamentarian procedures, when the question is called, is not debatable. When the question is called, the presiding officer moves on that motion to vote up or down.
And there was no debate. We voted up and down.
Yes. So now it's time to vote.
No.
You don't have to go back and do any more when you say
The motion for question failed. The motion for question failed. Mr. President, you got to control the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I'm going to defer to Mr., our legal, our council here and Mr. Hamilton. Can you all chime in on that? I was under the impression too that we would go to the, to the question. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps I can simplify this. As a good, it appears that there's still debate that is wanting to come on, and I would certainly support my fellow council members. So just to clear everything up, once and for all, we can make it three, three votes to allow debate and discussion to continue. So I would do that, I would withdraw my, my second.
We'll wait on a ruling from our council. Thank you, Councilman Clean. It would appear to alleviate the problem that we can continue forward then. We're going to do a roll call for the vote.
And the vote is on?
The vote is on agenda item number two.
Well, are we continuing debate?
The call for the debate, to continue the debate.
No, the, the vote is on the question, which is to end debate. So if you want to end debate, vote for yes. If you want to continue debate, vote no.
Okay, council members?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Again, I know the attorney's down there looking, and you asked the city administrator to look, but when a motion is on the floor and the question is called, that ends the debate. It's not debatable. You must vote then. Now, I'm not taking anything from anybody else's, whatever they want to say or do, but if you're going to do it right on one eye, I'm just doing it right on all of them. We've had the call for questions for the last 28 years. We have never debated the question, and the parliamentarian procedure, if they got the book down there, let's say, anytime a motion is called, it's not debatable. You vote. It's a motion to stop debate.
And that motion, Dr. showers, will require two thirds of the vote, so back to the question to end the debate. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. I'm sorry, roll call, Mr. Russell?
No.
No.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Clean?
As a courtesy of my fellow council members, I vote no.
Uh, Dr. showers?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the debate continues. Any further discussion, council members?
May I make a comment? Mr. Clean noted that, that the nominee is from North Huntsville, and for full representation of the city, he felt it was necessary to have her on the board. I would reckon, I would note that Mr., Dr. showers nominated a nominee from North Huntsville previous, at the previous board meeting, who was elected, so that representation is there for North Huntsville. South Huntsville has not had a representative on the library board in over 15 years, so if we are truly looking at fairness and representation from all over the city, that again would speak in favor of Mr. Pippen, who is from South Huntsville.
And thank you, Dr. Robinson. Dr. showers?
Again, we are raising an issue tonight because of one's preference. If you look at all of the boards and authorities that we have on the book tonight, there are many appointees that are from the same district all across the city, and it's not been, this is the first time this has been raised because a certain person wants to serve. To be redundant, there are several boards and authorities right now where there are several people from the same district, one, two, three, four, five, on the same board.
And I, and I recognize that. I was simply responding to Mr. Clean's comment.
I understand why you say what you said.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Uh, Dr. showers?
Uh, I'm finished.
Any further discussion, council members?
Mr. Chairman, and I don't speak against Ms. Cliff. I, I do not know Ms. Cliff personally, and I received her bio about 30 minutes before the meeting, and it certainly is qualified. I, I know the library's trying to raise money and build new libraries, and so I know the skill set of the board member they would like to have, and I agree with Dr. Robinson's point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any further discussion, council members? And I agree with everything that's been said because we have two well-qualified people who are interested in serving, and if I could digress for just a moment, when I was chief magistrate with the court and my job was to hire magistrates, and we would start out with 50 applicants, narrow it down to 10, three, then we get to the point where we have two. Either one of them could do an outstanding job, but we only have one position. I find myself in this position tonight, and we won't try to assassinate anybody's character. Mr. Pippen's and Ms. Cliff are both impeccable people because I have known them, both of them, for a number of years. So the question then tonight is, who do we decide? So are we ready for the question?
Yes.
All in favor indicate by saying Mr. Russell, how do you vote, sir?
Uh, no.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Clean?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. showers?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it passes. Congratulations. We're now at agenda item nine B, board appointment nominations.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, we need to do something with three.
And I withdraw
Dr. Robinson, you?
I withdraw my nomination for nine three.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Nine B is board appointment nominations. Nine B one is the nomination of Emily Donaldson for appointment to the Educational Building Authority of the City of Huntsville West Minister for a term to expire November the 9th, 2020, brought by Dr. Robinson. Any other nominations? We will take this up at our next regular council meeting. We're now at agenda item number 10, approval of expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Dr. showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we will pay this amount for expenses, $4,560,071 and 10 cents.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Clean. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. Ten B, finance committee report. Is there a finance committee report? Dr. showers?
Mr. President, I move the approval for travel for Councilwoman Jeanne Robinson to attend the Chamber of Commerce of Huntsville Madison County 2016 Annual Meeting in Washington, DC, April the 7th through the 19th, 2016.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by the chair. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at communications from the mayor.
Mr. President?
Yes, Dr. showers?
I would like to call Ms. Margaret to the podium.
Yes.
And I need her to make a few remarks
Yes.
...in terms of where we are with this budget and anything else she has to make comments on tonight.
Thank you, Dr. showers.
Good evening. We have our year-to-date sales tax numbers in, and we are about 5% year-to-date over last year. However, please keep in mind that this includes Christmas sales, and we have to get through the rest of the year, which is historically slower time, and it also will need to cover the somewhat softer property tax. Additionally, Dr. showers, you had asked for some housing numbers, and we have approximately 2,000, just over 2,000 houses on the market right now, and over, just over 600 of those are new build. Average house price has gone up about $6,000 in 15 versus 14. And also, we have brought on a new Assistant Director of Finance, Rachel Biggs. She started last week, and we're getting her up to speed to assist with transition for projected retirements.
Thank you, Ms. Sergeant. Dr. showers?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Margaret. What is the title of the addition to your staff?
Assistant Director.
Assistant Director. Okay, is she here tonight?
No, sir, she is not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. showers.
Ms. Sergeant? If I could ask a question, maybe you said it and I just didn't catch it. I think you said, we're, at this point, we're about 5%
Year-to-date.
...over last year compared to where we are. Where are we compared to the budget? Wasn't our budget based on a little bit of an increase over last year?
We had projected a 3% increase over last year, so we're about 2% over that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Clean. We're now at agenda item number 11, communications from the mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Uh, Mr. President, I don't have anything tonight. I'm going to be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're now at agenda item 12, communications from council members. Councilman Dr. Richard showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Had a busy week this week. Started off with attending the J.O. Johnson High School Concerned Citizens Meeting. Left that meeting the next night. We had the citizens who live in and around the Flumerton Development, those persons lives on the north side of Sparkman Drive from Blue Spring to Pulaski Pipe, the Baracka Concerned Citizens. We had a good turnout of citizens who came, and the city made presentations, giving everybody there an opportunity to weigh in on what they would like to see once the Baracka building is vacated. Good response at that particular meeting. On Thursday, before coming to council meeting, I went by the Rock the Vote Reception that was held for candidates that was running for state, local, district, and municipal offices. Also attended groundbreaking on Blue Springs Road, the Knox Senior Housing Development, a development that is going up to give more affordable housing for our senior citizens. And of course, on Saturday, the 20th of February, I will be attending the annual ADC breakfast, and we'll be doing a resolution at that particular meeting on behalf of the mayor and the council. And finally, asking council members to be mindful, on the 17th, the mayor's leadership development seminar will be going on at that particular time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. showers. Mr. Russell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure glad the Johnson League game was last, last meeting. Enjoyed going. I know Dr. showers and Dr. Robinson were there, and we had a great time. It was a wonderful game, and really was fitting for the city. I think there were 5,500 tickets sold, and it was just a great night. Also, speaking of basketball, the city is having a basketball tourney right now over at Optimus Park. It's probably kids 12, 12 and under, and there's three or four different leagues, boys and girls, and it's, it's been a great event. I was able to go last night. The city does a wonderful job running the tournament, and all the children and the coaches and the parents were having a great time. I want to say thank you to Mary Day Sneed and the Blunt Hospitally House for hosting the Mardi Gras Parade last Saturday. It was a wonderful event. Mayor Battle led off the parade, and I don't know if you, did you throw anything out, Mayor Battle? He just waved. He didn't have any moon pies or beads, but it was a lot of fun, and I hope we can continue that tradition, and we can all support that event next year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Dr. Robinson?
I had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to speak at St. Thomas Episcopal's Lunch and Learn Series, at Lathan Methodist Men's Breakfast, they meet at 7:00 on Sunday morning, and at the Chaffey Neighborhood Association. And as you can imagine, there was a lot of interest at all three of those meetings in South Parkway Construction. So we had lots of good conversation about that and updates, and I was very pleased to be able to share with them a document that was prepared by the South Huntsville Business Association to better, help everyone better understand the Parkway Construction. It has been a very valuable and a very popular document, and anyone who wants an electronic copy of it can email my office, and we will get that for you. We also held a town hall meeting on February 1st, standing room only. 100 people came, and Kathy Martin from City Engineering, bless her heart, and representatives from Aldott, Les Hobson, and Seth Burkett, and others were there to face the crowd, to give them an update, to review their plans for the, the South Parkway Construction. And again, we made the, the South Huntsville Business Association White Paper on the construction available. It was a very informative and very positive meeting. Mayor Battle was there to, to share his perspective and his experience, having been a business owner who endured overpass construction, and, and he talked about how this project is going to be different than what he went through with Governor's Drive overpass. So we have, we are doing the best we can to get as much information out as possible. The next meeting of the South Huntsville Business Association on March 8th will feature, again, an update on the construction by Seth Burkett from the, from Aldott, and we will continue to take, take input from people about the construction. On the whole, though, I have to tell you that I am hearing from people, they are impressed with how quickly the construction is progressing. It's amazing what an incentive contract will do to get people moving. They are impressed with the progress that has been made, and they are really excited that in three and a half years, we are going to see three bridges, Martin Road Bridge re-engineered and two new bridges built. It will make a tremendous difference in the traffic flow on, on the South Parkway, and we're looking forward to seeing that project completed. Also, on March 8th, at the South Huntsville Business Association, in addition to the overpass update, we will also have Ken Williams from the chamber giving a report on a market study on the South Parkway Corridor. So it will be very interesting to see what that, what that reveals. We are doing the best we can to support the businesses on the South Parkway during construction. The mayor at, at the town hall said he was eating his way up and down the, the South Parkway to support those businesses, and I've taken that challenge up myself and had lunch this week at Main Street Cafe. There are lots of great businesses that we can make a concerted effort to, to patronize during this time, and I would suggest to everyone that they might want to consider that. And finally, many thanks to a couple of scouts who visited me on the seventh floor here at City Hall yesterday. Joseph and Reagan Sobzac and Brandon Young came to complete their requirements for citizenship in the community, and we talked about their responsibility as citizens, and it was just very refreshing to have them come and visit and, and to see their enthusiasm and their desire to learn about what we're doing here in local government. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Councilman Clean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, the last couple of weeks, I've been kind of laid up with getting over this stupid eye, eye surgery, but been trying to manage things the best I can, courtesy of email and, and phone calls, but a lot of people have done great things to help during this kind of an unusual period for me. I did have a chance this, earlier this week, to participate with Mayor Battle, Shane Davis, on a meeting with the Fleming Westbury Civic Association Past President and the current de facto president of the Midtown Neighborhood Association, talking about access west to the, to, an entrance to John Hunt Park, landscaping along the Parkway, citizens' involvement in some of our planning processes that we have. It was a very positive meeting, and I think it says something good that elected officials, especially a mayor who has five districts that he has to deal with, was able to come meet with these neighbors, neighborhood representatives who had concerns, and I think that says something good about our community. that says something good about our community. Speaking of meetings, this Monday night, I will not be holding a town meeting due to the library being closed, but we will pick back up after the next, next month. And I do plan on attending the Rocket View Neighborhood Meeting going on Tuesday night. Looking forward to hearing good discussion about the proposed National Registry of Historic Placement and what that means, which is, means that a person can paint their house whatever way they want to, they can landscape their yard however they want to. This is not the same as a, this is different rather from a historic district and I think it's a great recognition for a very deserving neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clean. Dr. Robinson, you had a very informative town hall meeting as per usual and I certainly gathered a lot of good information that Ms. Martin and Aldott presented, so congratulations to you for that. And Dr. Showers, that tour of the Dr. Richard Showers Center renovation, I know you have to be extremely elated with the things that are happening there, sir, and congratulations to you as well. Council members, we need to take a quick recess for the tape. If, we want to take about ten minutes and we'll resume in about ten minutes. We'll resume at eight o'clock. We're now at Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Unfinished Business Items for Action. Council members, we do not have any unfinished business items for action. We're now at Agenda Item Number Fourteen, New Business for Consideration. Fourteen A is the introduction of an ordinance amended in Chapter Eight, Article Four, Vehicles for Hire of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, brought by public transit. The administration has requested unanimous consent for the immediate consideration of this ordinance. The Chair moves for immediate consideration of the ordinance. Second by Dr. Showers, on the motion for immediate consideration of Item Fourteen A, having been made by the Chair and properly second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Russell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Clean?
Aye.
Dr. Showers? The Chair votes aye. The motion has passed with unanimous consent. The Chair moves for approval of the ordinance amended in Chapter Eight, Article Four, Vehicles for Hire of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville.
Second.
Motion by the Chair, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brown, why, why are we doing this again? This is the third time and every time you promised me it's the last one? Is this the last one?
I hope so. We believe it will be, or I believe it will be. Council will remember that, that Transportation Network Vehicle Companies were authorized in the last redo of the Vehicle for Hire ordinance. It was about six months ago. What this, what this ordinance will do is additionally refine those requirements. It will also create a, a section or Division Three of the Taxi Cab Ordinance that, or the Vehicle for Hire Ordinance that will separate those things out. Few of the highlights of, of what this does, it will require any TNC that wants to do business in Huntsville to provide a, a two-thousand-dollar annual business license they'll have to pay. It will also require annual background checks and vehicle inspections from the companies. Those can be audited by the City of Huntsville as well. It will require one million dollars of liability insurance from the time that a passenger engages the TNC vehicle until the passenger leaves the vehicle. When they sign on the app and request the vehicle, the million dollars insurance goes into play when they leave the, the vehicle. The million dollars liability coverage is, is removed. It will allow us to aggressively enforce the TNC ordinance on the street. We've made some refinements that will allow our Police Department and, and our department inspectors to, to summon these vehicles, to inspect them, to look at inspection sheets, to look at drivers' waybills. It will have the driver's information picture, all that on it. So that's one of the things that we're gonna do is aggressively enforce this on the street. And finally, the TNCs will be required to certify annually each of their drivers that they've had their driver's background check, which is an extensive check, by the way. They'll also have to certify that all the vehicles that are operating under their TNC have been inspected in that year. So we feel like this is a, a, a good ordinance and, and make some refinements that I think will benefit the public.
Yeah, I appreciate your work. I know you've worked really hard on this. If a ride-share company wanted to operate in Huntsville, when could they do this, assuming we pass ordinance tonight?
They would have to submit for a certificate of need and necessity from the council, just like any other vehicle for hire does. So that would come to the council. The council could consider that and approve it and then the next day, essentially, a company could, could apply for their business license and be in business. So it's not an immediate thing, but it, it, it still requires council to approve the certificate.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Further discussion?
Mr. Hamilton?
I'm sorry?
Worked very closely with us on this and he may have some comments. I may have left out some things.
But I just wanted to add, Ms. Russell, I think it's, it's a good question because it is unusual that, that one of our departments brings you essentially a series of amendments to the same ordinance in, in what is fairly short order and it certainly is not the intent for the way we would conduct business. But one of the things that I think is important to recognize is the, the vehicle for hire industry is one of the most heavily regulated industries, you know, regulated in terms of by local government. And obviously, there's regulations that also come in from state and federal level, but it's, it's heavily regulated, not just in Huntsville, but every city in America. It's also one that we're now seeing being significantly impacted through the, the development and evolution of information technology systems, hardware, software, connectivity, those kind of things. And, you know, that's been the case for a lot of industries and it's really starting to catch up in this particular industry. As, as we have spent the last year-plus, and I'll tell you that, that Mr. Brown and Claudia Anderson out of the Legal Department in particular have put enormous numbers of man-hours into studying the issues that, that are created by the, the evolution of technology and has looked at the regulatory framework we've had in place in some cases for decades and also how that compares to how other cities are evolving. They've put a lot of time into, you know, collecting the lessons learned from other, other cities that have chosen to, to go out ahead of us in some of these changes. And so, you know, back in last March, you passed an amendment that actually added multiple categories to include the, the TNCs. It was only one of the categories that you added back in March and, and, and you changed some of that, that local regulatory framework to really mainly focus on lowering the barriers to entry for business to come in and be able to serve our citizens. Then in June, you considered another ordinance, amendment to the ordinance that further refined those regulations and where most of the discussion has been around the category of TNCs. In fact, those amendments made some fairly significant changes for the other categories of vehicles for hire. You know, limousines, luxury cars, taxis, pedicabs, you go down the list, about nine different categories that were all in some way or another affected by those amendments and, and ultimately, it's intended to make their operations in our city more efficient and more effective and provide a broader range of opportunities for our, our citizens to have more choices. So we have spoken and spent time talking to companies that operate in, in, you know, this particular industry and have, have worked very hard to learn lessons from how they function and making sure that, to the extent we possibly can, maintaining a level playing field, but also at the same time acknowledging the differences in the way they function as well as the differences in the kind of client base that they're each trying to pursue. So I, I, I agree with Mr. Brown. This is, this is a strong ordinance. It doesn't mean that we won't continue to learn. We need to be diligent and continue to learn and if there's more things that we see impacted by the, the changes in industry, then we, we owe it to our citizens to bring those changes to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Dr. Robinson?
I've had a number of people contact me who are very eager to see this service come here and so I, I know any TNC that, that wants to do business here is gonna have to come before council, we're gonna have to approve them. How soon do you think that's going to happen? Do you, are they expressing an interest to you in coming now?
We have had, we have had interest on, on the part of at least one company. A second company I think is, is interested as well. You know, the, the business decision has to be made, they, you know, they'll evaluate the market and what they think they can do, but we've had a considerable interest from one, one TNC and potentially a second one. We'll, we'll see how that plays out. But we're, we're revising the, the paperwork for the certificate of need and necessity and should have that done tomorrow and can provide it to any company that would like to apply, you know, certainly by the first of next week. So at that point, a company would, would be authorized to come and, and apply for that CON and come before the council.
So we should see something in a couple of months? A, a company potentially offering service?
I would hope so. I would hope so, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Showers?
Mr. Brown, have we developed a cost penalty for those laws being broken once you put it in place?
Councilman Showers, the, the TNC ordinance, as well as the overwhelming or overriding vehicle for hire ordinance, has the rules, the requirements, the regulation and, and has penalties associated with, with infractions of those rules. Those penalties can be to the driver, it can also be to the, to the Transportation Network Company to the extent of, of the council considering their license if it came to that. So there are, there are requirements in place and there are penalties for violation of those requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? Mayor Battle?
If I could say this, council, this, this takes our transportation system and our vehicle for hire system into the twenty-first century. This is something that matches the, the technology that is presented here, matches the technology that is found in Huntsville on a day-to-day basis. This is something our citizens have asked for, is something I think is, is what the future is in the transportation industry and the many, we'll find many people will change and follow this lead. I think many of our present taxi cab companies will follow this lead as, as they see the success of this system, their systems will get better and better. So this makes a, a whole transportation system better for the whole city of Huntsville and I would ask you to concur with this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Any further discussion, council members? The motion for approval having been made by the Chair and properly second, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. Thank you, Mr. Brown. We're now at Agenda Item Fourteen B, Introduction of an Ordinance Amended Section Fifteen-Dash-Eighty-Five Subsection Eighty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama. The administration has requested unanimous consent for the immediate consideration of this ordinance. The Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. On the motion for immediate consideration of Item Fourteen B, Mr. Russell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Clean?
Aye.
Dr. Showers? And the Chair votes aye. The motion having passed with unanimous consent, the Chair moves for approval of the ordinance amended Section Fifteen-Dash-Eighty-Five-Dash-Eighty. Second motion by the Chair, second by Mr. Clean. Discussion?
Mr. President, can we get, and I guess I've learned to listen more than see, can we get the Clerk Treasurer just to give a brief overview for the public's benefit?
Yes, Mr. Clean and members of council, the, the reason that we've asked you to also consider this one is it's, it goes along with the one that you just passed because this is the Clerk Treasurer's ordinance that establishes the fee structure. So as, as Mr. Brown mentioned, the, the licensing fees associated with the Vehicle for Hire Ordinance, this particular ordinance establishes those fees and allows the Clerk Treasurer to charge them when they come in to get their license.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any further discussion? The motion having been made by the Chair, properly second by Mr. Clean, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. Council members, we're now at Agenda Item Number Fifteen, New Business Items for Consideration or Action.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to hold Fifteen G, Fifteen R, and Fifteen Double C.
We have Fifteen G, Fifteen R, Fifteen Double C. Are there any additional items that you wish to hold?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hold Fifteen L and Fifteen N.
Fifteen L and Fifteen M.
N.
N, as in?
New.
November.
November. Thank you.
M and N?
Just M so far, Dr. Showers.
L and N.
So council members, what we have thus far? Fifteen G, Fifteen L, Fifteen N, Fifteen R, Fifteen Double C. Any additional items? Fifteen A is a resolution authorizing a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Jessica Lauren White, HHPC Consultant, brought by inspections. Fifteen B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept two-hundred-thousand dollars of fiscal year 2015 State of Alabama Emergency Solution, grant ESG funds, and assume the responsibility for the total amount of located matching funds brought by community development. Fifteen C is an ordinance amended Budget Ordinance Number Fifteen-Six-Forty-Two by changing the appropriated funding for various departments and funds brought by finance. Fifteen E is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations brought by finance. Fifteen F is a resolution approving the travel expenditures brought by finance. Fifteen H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville Tyler Technologies, Inc., as adopted by Resolution Number Fourteen-Dash-Four-Seven-Nine on June twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen, and Resolution Number Fifteen-Dash-One-Sixty-Four on March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, brought by finance. Fifteen I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Alabama Construction Constitutional Village Foundation, brought by administration. Fifteen J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and British Soccer, brought by Parks and Recreation. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number ten to the agreement between the City of Huntsville Johnson and Associates and Consulting Engineers, LLC, for utility easement acquisition for Church Street and Pratt Avenue widening and realignment, Phase One State Project Number Sierra Tango Papa Hotel Victor-Dash-Forty-Five-Hundred, Subsection Two Hundred, and City Project Number Six Five-Dash-Zero-One Romeo Delta Zero-Five, brought by engineering. Fifteen M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Dewey Lynn Majors, brought by urban development. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Alabama Department of Transportation for the cooperative maintenance of public right-of-way, brought by landscape. Fifteen P is an ordinance declaring certain equipment surplus and to be sold at public auction, brought by fleet. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Kathy Brown, brought by the Police Department. Fifteen S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville Community Action Partnerships of Huntsville, Madison and Limestone Counties, Inc., for services to the homeless population, brought by community development. Fifteen T is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville Family Services Center, Inc., for services to the homeless population, brought by community development. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville New Futures, Inc., for services to the homeless population, brought by community development. Fifteen V is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Mariah Rose Home for Children, Inc., for services to the homeless population, brought by community development. Fifteen W is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and North Alabama Coalition for the Homeless, Inc., Natch for services to the homeless population, warming centers, brought by community development. Fifteen X is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and the Alabama Nonviolent Offenders Organization, ANVU, Inc., for 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Public Service Funds for their Nonviolent Reentry Program, brought by community development. Fifteen Y is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and the Boys and Girls Club of North Alabama, Inc., for 2015 CDBG Public Service Funds in order to serve youth, brought by community development. Fifteen Z is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Harris Home for Children, Inc., for 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Public Services Funds for their Basic Crisis Program, brought by community development. Fifteen Double A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Village of Promise Hill for 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Public Service Funds for Educational Programs, brought by community development. Fifteen Double B is a resolution- 15BB is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Care Assurance Systems Aged and Homebound Casa, Inc., for 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funds for housing weatherization, brought by community development.
Mr. Chairman, I move for consolidation and approval of 15A through F, 15H through K, 15M, 15O through Q, 15S through 15BB.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Russell for motion for consolidation and approval of 15A through F, H through K, M, O through Q, S through BB.
Seconded by Klee.
Seconded by Councilman Klee. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. 15G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement, enter into an independent audit agreement by and between the City of Huntsville and Beeson and Alley, Inc., Certified Public Accountants, brought by finance. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to speak to Ms. Sergeant.
Yes.
We have used Beeson and Alley, I believe, ever since I've been on the council, and they're a great company and have done wonderful work. With you being new, do you think it's wise to continue to use the same auditor, or maybe we should have a new set of eyes on our books?
It is actually a standard practice to retain the same auditor on a repetitive basis unless you have received a failed audit report from their oversight organization. Beeson and Alley had their peer review in 2014 and received a pass fail. They are audited by the AICPA, which is a peer review because they're a mid-tier auditing firm, so they're still passing.
Do we always have the same person, people from Beeson and Alley, or do you change them up, or how does that work?
Well, we don't change it up. The audit agency would. You don't always get the same team because public accounting is a stressful job, and so they leave, and you end up with new ones, although your senior member is, and your partner usually are retained, and that's also good for continuity.
So you feel comfortable using the same firm that we've always used for all these years, and you're a new person, new in the job?
Yes, I do, because you have knowledge of your own workings, and if they raise a question that you are unsure about, you would push back, and that's how an audit should work, is with some give and take and dialogue.
And I know you have extensive experience in the private sector. Is this what a company that you work for would have done, or use the same logic?
Yes, and in fact, we just went through a change.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. 15L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville Mid-South Paving, Inc., for Bob Wallace widening and Merchant's Walk improvements, project number 65-14 Delta Romeo 04, brought by engineering. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Klee, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion.
Yes, council members, this is a final adjusting change order with Mid-South Paving for the Bob Wallace and Merchant Walks improvement where we widen the road. It was a change order increase amount of $31,270.31, and it was to actually match field conditions during construction.
Any further discussion on that? Dr. Robinson?
This was an issue with field conditions. This wasn't an ADA compliance issue, because I know we're struggling with those ADA projects. This wasn't one of those?
No, ma'am, it was not.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. Thank you, Ms. Martin. 15N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a parking license agreement between the City of Huntsville and Zipcar, Inc., brought by parking.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, this ordinance, if approved, would authorize us to lease spaces to Zipcar. Zipcar is a car sharing service. Those spaces will be located on Washington Street, here in front of City Hall, and on Dorothy Ford Lane. This is their initial endeavor in Huntsville, and my understanding is that if it's successful, they will expand to other areas of Huntsville, and this will certainly add an additional piece to the transportation puzzle that's important, just like taxicabs, just like TNCs, just like transit. This will be another piece of the puzzle that will be of service for our citizens.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President, is this a car rental agency, or what? You said it was a, I didn't quite understand.
Zipcar is a car sharing agency, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but they have a representative that's here that could address those questions if the council so desires.
Mr. President, I guess, just to get it out to the public, could we let somebody come, maybe just give a brief 30-second answer? By the way, welcome to Huntsville.
Thank you for having me. Zipcar is a car sharing service. Zipcar motto is vehicles when you want them. So we provide our members with access to vehicles, small-size cars, big-size cars, minivans, SUVs, et cetera. We provide those vehicles in cities and campuses and all across the globe. Once you become a member, you can sign up online, and we send you a Zipcar. That Zipcar gives you access to all of our vehicles all across the globe. So you can rent vehicles by the hour or by the day, gas and insurance included.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, sir.
Any further discussion? Dr. Showers?
I just wanted, for the record, to get his name.
Yes, sir. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Valer Lazard, general manager of Zipcar.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion, council members? Dr. Robinson?
As I understand the agreement, we're actually leasing you parking spaces.
That is correct.
For $56 a month.
Yes.
Explain how that works in this. You said you bring the cars to people, so I was assuming they were parked in certain spaces, and people would go to the cars.
Yeah, we actually park the vehicles in these assigned parking stalls, and when members, whenever they decide to go ahead and, whenever they need a vehicle, they just log in online or open up the app on their phone, and on the app you can see where the nearest Zipcar vehicle is, and then you would go ahead and book a reservation, and then go to that vehicle and access it with your Zipcar.
Okay, so you go to the car. The car does not come to you, but for something, for some reason, something you said made me think you brought the car to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Mayor Battle?
This system works very well in lots of urban environments, especially in downtown areas. Somebody like Mr. Russell could walk here to work. If he had to go to a meeting out at Research Park, he could get in his Zipcar, plug in his Zipcar, and take it out to Research Park, take it back. They would put it in.
Are you going to make me do that instead of riding with you now?
Yes. I've finally found a way to get Mr. Russell to take his own car and not ride with me, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Any further discussion, council members? Mr. Brown, for the clarification, Ms. Reed had inquired about the streets. I heard Washington Street. Where else will these cars be parked?
We're going to work with the Zipcar representatives to locate the exact spaces, but somewhere on Washington Street, near Bell Hudson Lofts is a place that they're desirous of, in front of City Hall here, in the hub of the activity here, and then on Dorothy Ford Lane at Twickenham Square, that apartment complex and a lot of activity in that area. And, you know, those being successful, then it would expand out from there. Wouldn't involve our participation because they wouldn't be using our spaces, but hopefully it'll expand from there.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
Mr. Colvin?
Yes, sir.
If I could just add quickly, one, you know, as the administration engages with a number of our partner agencies around the city and economic development and general growth of the city, you oftentimes hear us talking about partnerships with the chamber. In this particular case, our partnership with Downtown Huntsville, Inc., was instrumental. And in fact, Chad Emerson has really kind of made the connection between the city and Zipcar, and we're happy to have them here. I'll tell you, I, a number of years ago, lived in Northern Virginia where Zipcar has been for some period of time. As the mayor says, you know, you see them very commonly in dense urban areas and places where traffic is a significant issue. And as we're now seeing Zipcar grow across the country, they're coming into smaller cities. And so, you know, I can't tell you everywhere they are, but I would tell you that I think Huntsville having Zipcar here within their particular market space is kind of at the cutting edge. There's not a lot of cities our size that have Zipcar, and it works very well. One of the things, as we talk about how they're used, that I saw extensively in places where I've lived that had Zipcars, it actually gives families a choice to only own one car instead of two. But occasionally, they need a second car for a day. Zipcar is a solution, and it works very effectively for people who have those kind of needs or cars broken down for a day, and they need, you know, they need to essentially rent a car. It is not a taxi service. It is a very different kind of service. It's much more analogous to a rental car than a taxi-type service because you're driving yourself, but it really will make a difference, we think, in people's transportation options here in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And Mr. Emerson, do you have any comments on that, or would you like to address the council, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. 15R is a resolution to reconsider and rescind the adoption and approval of the acceptance of the low bid by DeAngelo Brothers, LLC, for herbicide services for the drainage ditches and sewer outfalls, as adopted by the Huntsville City Council on January the 28th, 2016, pursuant to resolution number 16-069.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this is unfortunate situation. I believe the gentleman spoke in public comments, and I think his name was Mr. Morgan, but he eloquently stated his case, and I sympathize with him. As somebody that has done federal contracting, I certainly understand his predicament. However, the legal department has to be involved in this, and things have to be done properly. And so, as you well know, as he told us, that at the last council meeting, we accepted low bids on numbered procurement items, but the one low bidder did not, well, the RFP was not right, or the RFQ was not right, and so the low bidder ended up being omitted from the competition, but now they're going to rebid it, and I think that's where the problem arises. And so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hamilton to state all the reasons.
Yes, and Mr. Hamilton, as you addressed that, Mr. Morgan had some concerns. As you debate this, he wants to know if the resolution is accurate. Why can't we consider awarding it to the next lowest bidder? And why would the city want to rebid it? If you could address that, please. Thank you.
So, members of council, this is certainly an action that we would never want to have to bring you something like this, but it's necessary for us to correct an error that occurred in the RFP process, culminating with us bringing you a bid for acceptance at the last council meeting. So as Mr. Russell described, is accurate. The RFP did not include a licensing requirement that we subsequently learned was required. And in fact, the gentleman that spoke this evening is, who brought us that concern, and the staff researched it and agree that he is correct, and have engaged with the appropriate boards with the state to confirm that, yes, this particular work does require the general contractor's license, which had been excluded from the RFP as a requirement. So that error has to be corrected. The firm that had submitted the low bid and was responsive to the RFP, was responsive to what we now know to be a mistaken RFP, has to be rescinded. And so that, we know that absolutely has to occur. We have continued to engage with the gentleman that spoke this evening on what needs to happen in terms of a rebid. What, the legal department has looked at it. The initial opinion they have brought to the mayor and were now presenting to you, to council, is that it will have to be rebid. But what our intent is to not immediately execute that rebid, but have the legal department go back, put a different set of eyes on it, do their due diligence to make absolutely certain that there is not another possible solution, and we will commit to you to not rebid it prior to the next council meeting, come back to the next council meeting, report back to you on what those findings are. If in fact, there is not another possible solution, then we can move forward with the rebid, but not do that until we've reported that to you publicly. If in fact, there is another possible solution, then we'll have to determine what that is and do the appropriate resolution to address that for you. So our recommendation is that you pass the resolution as it is tonight. We are stating publicly that there's no deadline for us to rebid it. We can allow the time to go back and make absolutely certain we have the process correct, and then come back and report to you publicly on exactly how we intend to move forward on this particular issue.
And thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I do have a concern. One is, while there's not a definite time in contracting, the first quarter of the year, quarters are very crucial, would we be able to ascertain if there were to be another way, i.e. going to the second lowest bidder? If there is not another way, could we also be prepared to move forward with the bidding so that perhaps we can get this in within the first quarter of this calendar year?
Yes, when we come back to you in two weeks, we will lay out for you exactly what we found and exactly what the law obligates us to do. If what the law obligates us to do is rebid it, then we would be prepared to do that immediately, but not do that until after we've publicly reported that to you. If there is a different solution, then it's going to require an action by you at that next council meeting, and we would have that action on the agenda and be prepared to discuss it at the next council meeting. So why, you don't want a two-week delay, I think, to make absolutely certain that everybody involved in this process is treated fairly by the law. I think it's appropriate for us to take those two weeks. We can, we will be able to accomplish anything we need to relative to these maintenance requirements in those two weeks, and then we'll move forward after the next council meeting is what we recommend.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any further discussion? Dr. Robinson?
I just wanted to be clear on this. So the reason that we can't go to the next responsible bidder is because the RFP in itself was flawed?
It was. So where, you know, the low bidder, the DeAngelo Brothers, they were fully responsive to our RFP. You know, there are times in which we submit an RFP, you know, publish an RFP, and people will submit bids that do not fully respond to the RFP, and they've become disqualified during that process. In this particular case, because we had not stated a requirement for that license, you know, they responded to RFP. Now, I understand that there's questions about, you know, the way in which the state law is written, and we will ask the legal department to go back and use all of the arguments that were brought before you earlier this evening in the public comments, and make absolutely certain we fully vetted those arguments relative to state law, and report that back to you at the next council meeting.
Now, I have a question. This is, it's an egregious mistake. I applaud you all for owning it and taking responsibility for it. It's created embarrassment for you all, but also for the difficult situation for the DeAngelo Brothers and others who were involved in it. So the question is, what can we do to make sure something like this doesn't happen again?
Let me say this, you know, portions of this is because there is conflict in the agencies that we were dealing with. One agency said you didn't have to, one said that you did. After we had bid it and DeAngelo had fully complied with it, it was brought up that you do have to. We went to the second agency and found out they did, and found out that both agencies have joint vestiges over this. So, you know, this is a very unusual case, but it's a case that you find out more information after you get finished, and we entered this thinking that we were following every aspect of the law. We were, according to one agency. The second agency said we need to go one step further, so now we're back to square one, that we have to start back over.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Any additional comments? Discussion? Discussion. Ms. Sergeant, would you approach the microphone? Microphone, please. And this is kind of a rhetorical question, but all of this kind of evolved from the fact that one of the bidders for this bid actually brought this to our attention, which is a good thing, because otherwise, it could have been illegal if we had awarded a contract to someone who didn't have a general contractor's license as required by state law. My question, my rhetorical question is, will we, and I know that your division is going to supervise the bidding, will we make sure that the person who brought this to our attention, namely Mr. Morgan with Chempro, Chempro, I believe, get an equal opportunity, just like the other two bidders, without any discrimination because of what he did, which was a good thing in my opinion? But could you just kind of address that and how you're going to, your office is going to handle that?
Completely. All bids come in, and they're evaluated on the same standards. It's a checklist that is included in the package. The name of the
that is included in the package. Uh, the name of the company really is irrelevant. We'll go through and ensure that everybody is hitting the criteria of the bid. Low bid will win as that's the best interest of the city, as long as they meet all of the requirements. All of our dealings with Mr. Morgan and Cam Pro have been above reproach. He has been professional and polite and there would be no reason for us to even look at him in any other way than a professional and public way.
And Ms. Sargent, that's why I said it was a rhetorical question. I already knew the answer to that, ma'am. Uh, although you've only been with us for a short period of time, uh, your office is handling things in an impeccable manner. I regret the flaw, but we'll make sure it doesn't happen again. So...
And we will, once we get a final reading from legal, we will ensure that we're following it.
Great.
Going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Sargent. Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, it carries. Council members, we're now at agenda item fifteen double C. A resolution authorizing the city council of the city of Huntsville to pledge the amount of $4,600 towards the minimum local match requirement of a potential grant from the Alabama Historical Commission to the Huntsville Historic Preservation Commission for the professional survey of the historic McThornmore Acres neighborhood to determine its eligibility for the National Registry of Historic Places. Uh, this is sponsored by the Chair and Councilman Klee. Uh, the Chair moves for unanimous consent to, to approve this item this evening. Is there a second?
Ms. Chairman, point of order, there's no need for unanimous consent on this item.
The Chair moves for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Discussion.
Ms. Chairman, could we hear from Ms. White? Uh, we recently approved her contract about five minutes ago, so congratulations.
Absolutely.
And now you're going to start earning it. So, uh, tell us what we're doing here.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to give you a little background. I was approached in August of 2015 by Donna Castellano with Historic Huntsville Foundation in regards to McThornmore Acres. Um, we discussed the possibility of a national register listing and at that point decided to approach Diane Walls, who is the coordinator of, uh, the Rocket View Historic Neighborhood, or excuse me, the Rocket View Neighborhood Association. Uh, Diane seemed pretty enthusiastic about it and seemed to think that the neighborhood would support a national register nomination. Uh, we took a cursory, um, tour of the neighborhood and what we found were, were, was a neighborhood that had very few changes and was relatively intact, uh, to its original character of the 1950s and 60s. It was quickly determined that, um, McThornmore Acres is a key neighborhood as it is composed primarily of space age residences indicative of one of the most important time periods in Huntsville's history. And it is also home, uh, to engineers and scientists that helped solidify Huntsville's, um, reputation as the space capital of the universe. With this encouraging information, I decided to approach the Alabama Historical Commission with the idea of a nomination. Uh, they fully support, uh, a survey and nomination of McThornmore Acres and have stated that this would be the first, um, space age historic district listed to the National Register of Historic Places in the entire state of Alabama, which is a huge accomplishment. Uh, following the AHC's recommendations, I have, uh, I, or I am submitting a certified local government grant, uh, requesting that professionals, that a professional survey be completed. The purpose of this particular survey is to identify whether or not, um, McThornmore Acres will be eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, the, the request is for $14,000. Uh, the grant requires a 40% match, meaning that a total of $5,600 is required, uh, to meet the needs of the grant. Uh, HHF, uh, has graciously, graciously donated $1,000 towards that match funding, leaving, uh, $4,600 left. To date, our proposal has, has garnered a decent amount of community support. We hope to gather more at our meeting on Tuesday. Um, and what we're seeing here is that, um, it's important to, to remind you here that, uh, national register designation does not impose any, uh, restrictions on property owners and it does, and it does not incur any further cost for property owners. What it does do, however, is that it, it recognizes, uh, the import, historic importance of McThornmore Acres on a national listing. It also, uh, provides property owners the, with the eligibility to be, uh, able to apply for certain tax incentives as well, as well, it has the potential to increase property values for McThornmore Acres. All of these are very positive things that a national register nomination can bring to this neighborhood. Uh, my sincere request to this, uh, council is that, um, you consider the application for $4,600, uh, to help our pursuit in completing a survey of McThornmore Acres, which will eventually lead to a national register listing.
Further discussion?
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Russell still has a question.
Thank you, Ms. White. Uh, Mr. President and Mr. Klee, I think you're the sponsor side. Um, Ms. Castellano used words like appropriate and she may even use authorized. And when I read the resolution, I see none of those wordings. My understanding is this is just a pledge and that we haven't made the budget resolution yet. And so, it's certainly my intention to support it at that time, but obviously, you know, if we don't have the money, it's going to come from somewhere and it depends on where that money comes from. And so, I just want to make sure the public knows that this is a pledge, it's non-binding, we intend to do it. I think the council will stand by that, but there's nothing about authorizing, authorizing money or appropriating money?
Yes, President, if I, if I could.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Well, thank you. What, uh, what Mr. Russell said is correct. It's, what this resolution does is really is an expression of your intent to support the action. You do this pretty commonly with, with grant requests. We oftentimes, particularly from the police and fire departments, uh, bring you grant requests where there's a matching requirement. Uh, so this is your, expressing your intent to support that match. If we in fact get the grant, then the, the finance department will bring you a, a future budget ordinance that would appropriate the dollars and allocate them to, uh, to this particular account.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any further discussion? Mr. Klee?
Uh, Mr. President, of course, I'm going to speak in favor of it. This is a neighborhood I've enjoyed working with who, um, that has been very actively working, holding frequent meetings, uh, very numerous phone calls back and forth to, um, improve the neighborhood. And, Mr. Culver, I know that in the past, when it was in the district you represented, you were very actively involved too. And, uh, I think this will be a great shot in the arm. It's recognition again, and I think it's going to be an education process similar to what we had with the previous, um, uh, neighborhoods in the past. It's, a person can paint their house however they want to. They don't have to get permission from any committee. This is, uh, recognition for the neighborhood. It's a source of pride. This is not a historic district. It is inclusion on the National Registry of Historic Places. And, uh, I think that's certainly something that's going to get repeated. It's going to be a good education process to repeat over and over again with the public. We cannot be too, uh, too redundant on that. But, uh, I think this will be a great thing, uh, if it works, works out. Uh, I'm looking forward, one way or another, I'm going to be at that meeting, uh, Tuesday night and, uh, but again, I think the work that, uh, Ms. White you have done, Donna you have done, and certainly, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Walls, which y'all have done, and others from the neighborhood, uh, this is, you know, this is just a great thing that people really have that much pride and that much commitment in their neighborhood to come out and invest the amount of time that, uh, all y'all have in this neighborhood. And, um, again, this is a great thing and, uh, certainly I look forward to, uh, supporting it.
Thank you, Councilman Klee, and I certainly share your view. Although I will not be there Tuesday night, I certainly support, uh, our efforts in this area. Mayor Battle?
Ms. White, one last question. The difference, I guess, this may be the difference in a district in a designation. We had concerns in the, uh, Old Town, uh, Twickenham area that is houses were taken down and we lost historic structure, that we would lose our historic designation. Is there any concern in this neighborhood if someone starts coming in doing as they've done in Blossomwood and Thornton Acres, uh, taking down houses, putting up new houses? Would, do you ever hit any percentages that, that have that designation taken, taken away? Or is it the designation that the place was historic at one time?
Uh, yes, sir, there is a number, but let me back up here a little bit. Uh, to touch base, this will be a national register historic district. Uh, the difference between, uh, say, Old Town, Twickenham, Five Points, Alabama A&amp;M, these are locally designated historic districts, uh, meaning that people from those districts petition our city council to come under the purview of the Huntsville Historic Preservation Commission as a means of protecting their designation long-term. With a standard national register designation, uh, like I said, there are no restrictions. You don't come under the purview. You have to request to come under the purview of the commission. Uh, that being said, uh, we do have to maintain a majority of contributing or what we would say, uh, call a historic house, uh, to main that, maintain that, uh, national register listing. If the scales tip in favor of non-contributing houses or rather non-historic houses, then it would be delisted from the National Register of Historic Places. But that does not, uh, there's nothing to prevent that from happening.
And that would just be simply a, a neighborhood choice, uh, really, if they chose to do that, take that many houses down and rebuild them?
Uh, the city of Huntsville requires that 60% of property owners, uh, petition city council to come under the purview of the Huntsville Historic Preservation Commission. At this time, we are not pursuing that at, at all in McThornmore Acres. We're just looking at national register designation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Thank you, Mayor Battle. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, it carries. Congratulations. We're now at agenda item sixteen, legal department items and transactions.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Sixteen A one, sixteen B one A and one B.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Councilman Klee. Motion to approve and consolidate sixteen A one, sixteen B one A and one B. I will read these and, uh, we'll vote, put it to vote. Sixteen one A is ordinance vacating a portion of utility and drainage easement for property located in Anzley Farm Phase One A subdivision along Ashore Drive, WP Madison Investment LLC. Vacation of right of ways. One A is a resolution consenting to the vacation of a portion of a right of way for properly located, for property located in Anzley's Farm Phase One A subdivision along Ashore Drive, WP Madison Investment LLC. Sixteen B one B ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of a right of way for property located in Anzley's Farm Phase One A subdivision along Ashore Drive, WP Madison Investment LLC. Ready for the question? Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, it carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now at agenda item number seventeen, non-roster communications from the public. If you wish to address the council, please go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Yes, Mr. Morgan?
This is Adam Morgan again, uh, two eight seven six Duplex Road, Spring Hill, Tennessee. Uh, I was the gentleman y'all speaking of, talking about the, the, the bid situation earlier. I want to thank y'all for y'all's, uh, stewardship throughout this matter. Uh, the, been a professional manner throughout the city of Huntsville administration through this. Um, the, the, the only part about this is I felt the communication was a little one-sided, uh, that, uh, I, I disagree with the resolution that was put forth. Uh, it does say in the specs, it does call for a general contractor's license within, uh, parenthetical, if applicable. And, uh, the statute says, uh, service done over $50,000 would make it an applicable, uh, necessity to have that license or obligated, obligated to have that license. And on page 10, page 15 and page 29, these, these licenses are, are mentioned. And in fact, in, in, in one, uh, I'll, I'll just read one. Uh, bidders may be disqualified and the rejection of bids may be recommended for any. And section G, for public improvement projects only, failure to note the general contractor's license number or note that the bid amount is less than $50,000. That's, that was a red flag to us. On the address page, at the end of the bid, it has a, uh, section right here that says, general contractor's license in parentheses, if applicable. Well, we deemed it was applicable. Why, why does, what is the specificity of it is outlined in the specs? What does that mean? It was listed. And I'm outraged that no one saw it our way because it's an easy pass to the next lowest bidder. We're qualified and we wanted the work and we tried to make this easy. Now, we're going to have to go bid it again. When everyone else gets to see the price, everybody's seen the numbers and I might not have the opportunity. And it's over just a mistake and they can't see it my way? This is what's the problem. And, and I wish that that was, that motive was known. That's the problem here, is that I was the easy way out. I was the best solution, the most qualified bidder and not recognized as such. I caused a problem in a scene and that's not what this was meant to do. I was the default person to go to. And why? And I didn't get an answer. And that's my frustration. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Hamilton, would you like to address that, please?
Mr. Morgan, your, your, yeah, Mr. Morgan, your points are noted and that's exactly why I said that we will not rebid this contract until the legal department has reviewed each of your points and we will come back and publicly lay out exactly what the correct solutions are. I'm not saying that, that it'll be found against you. I'm not predisposing what will be found. We're going to take each of the points that, that you've made tonight and the legal department will review all of those in the, in the next two weeks and report back publicly to, to city council and to all the, the public that's here exactly what is required. And if in fact, the, it can be solved without rebidding, then that's what we will do. If in fact, it can't be solved without rebidding, then we will follow the law. But that, that answer is yet to come and it will be provided in two weeks.
Thank you. My only point to that was that if you...
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Morgan.
In two weeks, the, the license could be renewed by the...
Mr. Morgan, I'm sorry, sir, you're, you're out of order tonight. Um, Mr. Hamilton, if you would get with him for any further discussion, we would appreciate it. Okay? Thank you. And yes, sir, yes.
My name is Junior Jordan, uh, manager, A Metro Cab Company, three oh three Triana Boulevard. My concerns was with this ride share thing, Uber, Lyft whatsoever. Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Brown, we, we've all talked. But since then, I've got thinking about like our hotel business and airport business. If they let them out there, it's going to hurt us worse or... Uh, they be picking early morning hotel trips up before the van starts running. That's going to hurt the cab business terribly. We got nine cab companies in town. We've been here. We from Huntsville, Alabama. We not from San Francisco, New York. We're here at Huntsville, Alabama. We take care of all the public. Uh, I got on their website last night, Ubers. Their drivers can drive for two hours, cut their phone off, come back to work when you're ready. Well, I'm sure they still got backup, but that ain't no concern. But we're 24 hour seven here, radio dispatched. We also rent a building here where there won't be another building for leasing over here in Huntsville. And I hope y'all, when they do come in, that they have to do that same thing. And, uh, that's my concerns for tonight. And I guess when the first one comes, we'll hear it and see. We'll go from there. But I hope they get the, a level playing field and, uh, I don't think they should be able to dispatch from San Francisco, New York. They should have an office in city Huntsville like everybody else has to. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. And as a taxi cab owner, you all provide an invaluable service to our community and we appreciate you for that. Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Wesley Wilson from United Lux Cab Company.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-two, twenty-two Hall Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Y'all passed something tonight without giving it much thought. Uh, who's going to pick the old people up from the grocery store, Walmart? These people are not going anywhere for $3. We do. We put the old people's groceries in the house. They're not going to do that. So, y'all just, I mean, y'all, it sound good. And I want to see the city of Huntsville grow, but I, I'm, I'm going to be a senior citizen pretty soon. And I want somebody to put my groceries in the house. They're not going to put the groceries in the house. We have to. Sometime we get a tip, sometime we don't. Sometime we get cursed out. If we break a egg, we do. So, y'all didn't give it much thought. Think about it. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And likewise, I would be espousing the differences in your services versus the other services. Um, the general public has really demanded, um, alternative source of transportation with our transit bus system and with all of the other privately owned taxi cab services. So, this is not to take anybody out of business. It's just an additional mode of transportation for residents in Huntsville and Madison County, sir.
It's going to take some of us out. I promise you it will. I promise you that. It's going to take some of us out of it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Reed?
I'm Jackie Reed. And I have to agree with that gentleman right there. You're going to put a lot of them out of business. But maybe I need to jump the fence and take up with... But, maybe I need to jump the fence and take up with the big-money boys. I'm fighting a losing battle up here, seems like, by myself. I get three minutes and have to get real noisy and all upset to get my messages out there. Anyway, will you be liable if you pass this, you done passed one of them tonight, all these vehicles coming in here, and these drivers is driving these people? Will you be liable if somebody gets killed for passing this ordinance on some of these cars? Will you all be liable for somebody, if somebody gets killed for that? For the drivers is driving them and wherever they're going? I don't know, you ought to know that, surely you need to know that. Anyway, I want to ask about blighted areas. Do you have an ordinance in this city to take care of blighted areas, like industrial development out there? You write up citizens for their houses, what about the blighted areas that you talked about, so blighted out there that we're going to have to do something about it, industrial development? I wonder, what about your ordinances out there that cover those people's property? We don't have any ordinances for that. We've got a different set of rules for the rich, and a different set of rules for the poor. I have a real problem with that. I didn't tell y'all I loved you tonight, but I do, and maybe one of y'all can answer one of the questions for the mayor here. On that Sewell property, how many acres was it that you have on hold out there? You have an option on, how many acres? How much money have we put down on it? And how long is that option going to last? Industrial Development Board, you took it from the council, and you gave it to the Industrial Development Board, so I hadn't lost contact, I hadn't lost contact with it yet, though. I'd like for somebody to answer that question right there.
Thank you.
I know he tried to, but I'd like to hear the rest of that answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And the questions are, how many acres does Sewell property consist of? How much money we put down? And how long will it last? If you want to address this now, Mr. Davis, you can, or if you want to get that data and get back with Ms. Reed, however you prefer.
I can address it now, council members. The month of January, you extended the Sewell mega-site property. It's up to 2,000 acres that are available to the city or the Industrial Development Board for purchase. We have not purchased anything. I think Ms. Reed, at times, has got confused on how much property we've bought. We have bought zero acres. We have no intention to purchase 2,000 acres. It is a tract that's being held for the recruitment of jobs in a large development, similar, much larger than what a Polaris or Remington would be. And that option lasts for four years. It is two payments, once every six months, for $75,000.
Thank you.
And that is a reduction from what we had paid in the past, it's half.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And if you would get with Ms. Reed, perhaps after the council.
I'd like one more question answered, sir.
Happy to do so, sir.
How much did we put down to beginning of the $15 million that we put a contract on? How many thousands of dollars did we put down on that first contract option?
And, Mr. Davis, could you answer that last question for Ms. Reed, please?
I can, I can. We've had a series of years of contracts for this, I think a total of five years that we've had an option, and that totaled $300,000, and it came through council.
Thank you.
So, going back to get this extended, the property owner allowed us to reduce that lease rate, the annual payment, by half.
Thank you.
To be in a partnership.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Is there a motion? We adjourn.